We'd like to call it Region School Committee to Order by roll call if you're here. Sarah Marshall?
Here.
Deb Leonard?
Here.
Tillman?
Present.
Jennifer Shaw?
Here.
William Scher is here. Irv?
Irv is here.
Bridget Hines? So the first thing on our, I guess we need to, Irv, do you want to call Union 26 to order?
Yes. William?
Here. She's not here.
And Sarah Bess?
She's not here.
I'm here.
All right, so Bridget?
Here.
Sarah Marshall?
Here.
Irv, we're here and present. So having called the meeting to order, the first order of business, one is the report by the Chair of the Search Committee, and secondly, a possible addition to the agenda which was not available within the 48-hour period might possibly come up in terms of a vote.
Right, thank you. So I'm the appointed School Committee co-chair for the Superintendent Search Committee, and we learned over the weekend, so not 48 hours in advance for posting, that the committee was set up on the assumption that it was not a public body, and we learned that that is incorrect. And so we have been scrambling, we mostly being Jennifer and myself with help from the Central Office, to find out what was needed to get us into compliance, and we've been doing that frantically. And so we have a meeting posted for tomorrow, public meeting, and, but now like every public body, subject to open meeting law, we will need a quorum to meet. So we're hoping we get a quorum of members tomorrow. If we don't, then we'll have to postpone. But I've already attached to the agenda, the minutes, the draft minutes, and the documents that we looked at in our only other meeting, our first meeting, that unfortunately did not happen in public. So that's, and we will revote the one item of business that we had. That first meeting was mostly 21 people introducing themselves to each other. We have not done, excuse me, really any substantive work yet. So that's the update. I've apologized to all the members of the Search Committee. We've asked them to drop everything, to try to tend to some tasks that put us in compliance with the appropriate regulations. So I also want to apologize for the public, for us not having done the right thing from the beginning. So any questions about that? Then there, I'm sorry, Irv?
I have no questions. I'm assuming then that there will not be a necessity of a vote tonight?
Well, no, what I, what I would like, well, I don't know if it needs a vote. Maybe it does, and that's why I wanted to bring it during this joint session. Now that Jennifer is also on the Search Committee, and we are, the meetings are subject to open meeting law, I think it would be very beneficial for these committees to appoint her as the backup appointed School Committee co-chair in case I cannot make it for some reason. I think it would be smart to have someone familiar with open meeting law as a co-chair.
One question, is there currently a co-chair?
There is, but since we did that election or that vote, not during a public meeting, we'll have to redo it. And also, we elected a student who's, who's been very helpful, but she knows nothing about open meeting law. Or didn't until just very recently.
So, so what are you asking Union 26 to do?
I think I would like both committees to vote to appoint Jennifer Shaw as the backup appointed School Committee co-chair to the Superintendent Search Committee, so that she can take over for me if I am absent.
What is the difference between a backup co-chair and an actual co-chair? I mean, I'm not sure what this all means.
Just that if I am not able to attend a meeting of the Superintendent Search Committee, I would like a school committee member who is on the committee, and Jennifer's the only other one, to be able to run that meeting or help run that meeting.
Just point of clarification, Marquita, you have two school members.
Usually that's the position of the co-chair.
I'm sorry?
You have two school committee members on your committee.
Oh yes, two others, Marquita. Yes, I haven't, I haven't spoken with her, yeah.
And Jennifer Shaw.
If I don't need, if we don't need to.
What you're describing is a condition in which the co-chair would automatically take the place of the chair if the chair is not able to perform their duties or are absent, et cetera. So I'm not sure what you're saying is that there is no co-chair or the co-chair is a student, but that student is not going to be co-chair, or that you might be voting for a new co-chair? Is this a temporary thing, i.e. in terms of just tonight, et cetera?
We will definitely have to, excuse me, elect the second co-chair. This committee was set up to have two co-chairs, no chair. I am, I'm the one that you appointed to be a co-chair. We will have to elect the other co-chair, who might or might not be someone familiar with open meeting law. Now, if we can just ask somebody to fill in for the co-chair and without having to designate someone in advance, that's fine. I just want to explore whether this is necessary.
Are you saying that the current co-chair, other than you, is a co-chair who could not serve in that capacity?
It will be up to the committee. We will have to elect a new co-chair because our first election did not happen in public, and it might or might not be the same person.
Sir, I understand that, but what, why are you then asking us to appoint another co-chair when the other co-chair is going to be elected?
Because you appointed, you, this commit, these two committees appointed me.
Yes.
So I'm at, if you don't think you need to be the ones to designate an alternate, then, then that's fine.
Well, it's not necessarily that we have to designate an alternate. I am confused as to the role of the other co-chair, which you are going to elect in an upcoming meeting.
So I think that, that I would personally, it would make sense for me, for you, to have your committee organized by chair and co-chair, and see, given the new set of circumstances, if it makes sense for you to have someone in that co-chair role who is familiar with open meeting law and so forth. So I would hold off and let the committee do its work, and then if you're still in that situation, come back to us.
Okay.
I tend to agree with that because it seems highly irregular. Either you have a co-chair, a other co-chair is able to serve, or they're not able to serve, and that really would be up to that particular committee to make that determination and then act accordingly.
Okay. Since the two committees, or maybe it was the Subcommittee for a New Superintendent, thought that the, that it was wise, I guess, or preferable, to have a school committee member as a co-chair, I'm simply raising the possibility that that person, who is me, might miss a meeting. So if that's not a, if you don't consider that a problem, okay, we'll just elect a co-chair.
Then, and then if there are two co-chairs, and my, my definition of a co, of co-chairs is that, hey, if one, if you got two of them, then one would serve in the absence of the other.
All right, then we will make sure to elect a co-chair who can do that.
Thank you.
Thank, all right, thanks. Then the only other thing I just wanted to float was that, again, when this committee was set up, it was agreed that, and there are 21 people on it, if, if somebody stepped off the committee, you were not going to nominate someone to fill that position. So what that means for open meeting law, I think we just need to recognize, that there will not be vacancies. And if people drop off the committee, our quorum, the size of the committee will change and the quorum may change. That's all, okay?
Thank you.
That's all I have, thank you.
So we.
All right, so Sarah, do you, do you require a vote on that, on that issue?
I, not as far as I know.
What?
Not as far as I know.
All right, thank you.
So can we move on to the presentation of the stakeholders' input from McPherson and Jacobson? I think Ralph and Candace are here. Are the two of you all ready?
Yes, we are. Are we on?
Yes, you're on, we can hear you.
Point of order, are you able to, hi, hi Ralph, hi Candace. I am, William, are you, or Doug, are you able to share the document that's attached to the agenda?
I can.
Thank you.
Have to open it first, but yes.
Are we all?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. First of all, Candace, Candace Dr. Finan, I would like to thank everyone in the district for the work that they've done with us throughout the last few months. I particularly like to thank Jennifer and certainly Sarah, where we've been working. Sarah and I have been working closely together with Dr. Finan the last few weeks, and in honor of the student who was elected as the co-chair, and I know that might change tomorrow night, but please, we want to send our thanks to her as well, and certainly to Debbie Westmoreland for all the work she's done with us. And let me say that the work that we did with the stakeholders in the community was very productive and instructive to us. I would like to say that we met many, many wonderful people. It was, it certainly is an engaged community through the stakeholder sessions that we had and the online survey that was completed by members of the community. So I'll also give you an overview at this point where we are. The posting for the position closed last week, and we have sent over a PDF file to your Search Committee, which includes 10 applicants. We believe that there are many strong applicants in that pool of candidates. I will be meeting, if the meeting does end up occurring tomorrow evening with the Search Committee, and providing some guidelines from our perspective in terms, terms of what's important, particularly confidentiality. Confidentiality to us is extremely important, and we know that at the initial stages in a search, it's extremely important to the 10 candidates as well. Now certainly, once your committee determines who they're going to interview and who they're going to move forward to the Board of Edu, I'm sorry, to the Board Committee to interview, if it's down to two or three or however many, then confidentiality obviously does change because it becomes more public. And we certainly understand that, and also the candidates understand that. We did emphasize, and I know you just had a conversation about quarums and attendance at this Search Committee meeting, but I know that you chose to move forward with this Search Committee, and the Search Committee was formed, and it is our view that the individuals who volunteered for this committee have indicated that they are willing to participate in your search process, and we want to emphasize how important it is and how really critical it is that they attend the meetings and participate in those initial interviews of the semifinalists, particularly that you're hopefully going to arrive at a consensus and the candidates are you want to send on to the committee. Well, that's just a little overview in terms of where we are now. Dr. Finan and I are going to go through the summary. Certainly, I know that you have the document, will certainly answer any questions, and should you, hopefully, you will then post this on your website, and we can post it on the McPherson and Jacobson website because I know the candidates would be very interesting, interested in reviewing this document, so they are well-prepared for the interview process. And certainly, they should have started, and I know many of them have, doing their homework on the district so that they are fully prepared for when they engage in the dialogue with the Search Committee. So Dr. Finan, I'll turn it over to you. And you know that we asked four questions, the summary, when we did these interviews, et cetera, are all in this document, so.
Thank you, Dr. Ferry. Good evening, everyone. Those four questions are in, in the document. If you wanted to move up, okay, stop right there, please, thank you. The first question I will, I will review for you. And just remember, we asked every stakeholder group, as well as the survey, had the same questions. The first question was, what are some of the positive aspects of living in the Amherst Pelham community? Should a candidate be required to locate, relocate to the area from either another region in Massachusetts or from out-of-state? And this was an area that so many of your stakeholders were really aligned on, with their answer. The consensus was, it's a great area, they love the area, it has a lot to offer. There are five colleges and universities in the area that bring a lot of diversity to the area, that brings strength into the area. It's located between, not that far from Boston and not that far from New York City, and I think one group even talked about Montreal. So there are many opportunities for those who enjoy the arts, musical performances, as well as hiking and skiing and what, what your beautiful environment offers in the area. They talked about having excellent restaurants. They go that people can have a nightlife if they wish. There's very much a small-town feel, and everyone knows someone in the community. So there's a likeness of wanting to be in the area and, and being with people. There are excellent recreation offerings, and the climate with Four Seasons is desirable, and that was overwhelmingly consensus with the group. The topi, topography for the area is beautiful. So this was an area where the proudness of your stakeholders really came through. They're very proud, love the area, and really spoke very highly of what it has to offer. And Dr. Ferry now will go through question number two.
So question two, we asked, what are some of the positive aspects of working within the Amherst Public School District? And we particularly want folks to tell us about the programs and the district itself. And the consensus among everyone that we interviewed is that the district has many outstanding programs, and particularly outstanding programs for special needs students, and they were very proud of the Ames Program. The Spanish Immersion Program in the elementary school is also exceptional, and we heard tremendous amount of positive feedback regarding that program. District offers outstanding programs in the arts, performing arts and music programs. There's an excellent variety of course offerings in the high school, and overall, the respondents had very positive feelings regarding the teaching staff, as they are dedicated, and many are long-term employees that have a commitment to the district. So we'll go on to question three and four, which is where everyone really wanted us to focus when we had these conversations.
So question three, what are going to be the major challenges that the new superintendent will have to address if the individual is going to be successful? So as you read these comments, and I'll go through the summary, but I would really invite you to look at every comment that was made by each group because they really do share more in-depth from what, what I will be reviewing with you right now. But there are, these are the common themes. The first one, as expressed by many individuals representing various groups from different cultural, religious, sexual orientation and race, the district lacks sensitivity regarding the ongoing political issues, both nationally and internationally, that these underrepresented and minority groups are facing within the schools community. They express that the district has not implemented effective strategies and programs in order to make an effort to address these concerns and issues. Second major theme, the issue that occurred in the middle school regarding the treatment of transgender students during the spring of 2023 was shared during the majority of the virtual stakeholder meetings. The concern is that the district continues to lack transparency regarding this issue, and that appropriate actions have yet to be taken to address the issue in an effective manner. The third major theme, there is a lack of trust throughout the district and the communities. Will be essential for the next superintendent to establish trust through the actions that are implemented on an ongoing basis. The fourth major theme, the new elementary school that is being built will present a challenge as related to redistricting and the need to move sixth-grade students to the middle school. And the last major challenge, theme, superintendent serves three different school committees, and this present challenges as related to budget development and effective articulation. Also, effective articulation with the sending elementary school districts is a must.
And there were three others. The new superintendent will need to repair and build relationships within the community, need to address limited fiscal resources with increasing capital needs. There was concern that all the outstanding programs in the district, that the individuals we spoke to want to see them remain in the district. And the new superintendent will need to address discipline issues, including, but not limited to bullying across the entire student body. So these were the themes that we heard under question number three. And if we could then move on to question four. And if we could then move on to question four, the personal characteristics, traits, and experiences that folks would like to see in their next superintendent. And again, as you read through the entire report, of course, the list can is individuals have additional thoughts on this, but the consensus was, a great listener who can establish trust within the district and communities. An individual who has a thick skin. Many groups shared that the only thing silent in Amherst is the H. We heard that from many of our stakeholder interviews, and that's not a bad thing, but it's something that the new superintendent is going to have to understand, that the community is very involved, and that listening aspect is essential. A collaborative leader who involves teachers, students, and community members in the decision-making and problem-solving process. An individual has demonstrated implementation of successful programs, and the key is demonstrated implementation of successful programs with successful outcomes as related to diversity, equity, and inclusion. Experience in successful completion of capital projects, a commitment to remain in the district long-term, honest, visible, and student-centered. And as I had mentioned, there were many additional characteristics, and you could read them throughout the report. So that is the summary of what we learned, and you can answer any questions that anyone has. But again, you'll see that the report was broken into all the groups that we met with, what we heard from them, and we captured the essence in terms of the summary.
Thank you for all that input. Does anyone have any questions? Jennifer?
Thank you, Ralph and Candace, for that summary. So you guys have done this a lot in other communities, so I guess I have a two-part question, like, how does this summary compare to other communities you've been in in terms of like, is this magical unicorn person out there? And what do you think our chances are of finding someone who can meet all of the needs?
That's a great question. Can you scroll back up to question number three?
Yeah.
Okay, and let me say that in many of the searches I've completed, the first bullet, in terms of, you know, what's going on locally, politically, nationally, it's common, it's a common theme in districts I've worked with last, particularly the last two to three years, but particularly the last year, year and a half, particularly with some of the things that are occurring in our world and locally. The issue regarding trust, we hear that often. When there's a new school coming on requiring potentially some movement of classes and redistricting, it's not unusual, it's not unusual concern. Unique to you, your district, although there are other commonalities in some other districts throughout the country, serving three school committees is somewhat unique, and it's going to take someone who can understand how to, I don't know, work with three different committees. But the applicants, obviously, that are in the pool now understand that. And if you could just scroll down to a little bit to the net, to right here, fiscal resources and increasing capital needs, that's a common issue everywhere, everywhere. There isn't a district that I've worked with that is not having challenges in terms of local taxation, local support fiscally for their school district, state support for the school district, and federal support for our schools. And then the other issue is, how did the districts, and this is a common theme I'm hearing as well, depending upon how the districts used the stimulus? And if they used it in a really positive way, in a smart way, or did they use it for other things? So that's a concern we hear everywhere. And the whole issue of bullying in terms of discipline, common. It's common, it's everywhere we hear, we hear it. So there's not, there's some uniqueness, but not a tremendous amount for what the concerns are. Do I think you're going to have someone in the pool? We hope so. We look at the pool of candidates, and I know your model in terms of your search committee, we don't want to jade that process at all, but we believe in terms of, after our analysis, there are probably, if we were doing this search from our typical model where we would send you perhaps five or six candidates, we believe there are six candidates in that pool that we would feel comfortable sending to you to interview.
Yep.
Thank you.
I would just add two quick things, if you don't mind. The issue that was prevalent with all the stakeholder groups about what happened in the middle school previously, that, an issue like that emerges in every district we do searches. Whatever the latest thing or the last thing that happened that was emotional, was an issue for the district, usually ends up in the stakeholder report. We hear a lot about it. And the bullying issue, that's in the national news almost a couple times a week with what's happening, so that's very common. So I echo, Ralph and I have talked about the candidates, and I think you have a really good pool, so I hope that there is a person who will be able to tackle your issues and meet with your community. Because the one other thing we heard is, they want the person out in the community, they want them visual, they want them to be able to converse and have, be that transparent figure that will build trust, and I think any of those candidates will do that.
Thank you. Deb, did you have a question?
Yeah, there was a--
All right, I could just load one more piece to that question--
Please, go ahead.
Jennifer, if you go down to question number four, it is common, common in all of the searches, that the community and board is looking for someone who has all these characteristics and more. Sometimes we say, gee, do you want the person really to like walk on water? Yes, they do. But the superintendency is a very challenging position today in public education. And one of the things that we have, we said consistently, all the stakeholder groups, is change takes time.
Yes.
And whoever this person is, the community, the stakeholder groups, the teachers, the administrators, the students, everyone that we spoke to, you need to give this person some time and give them support, give the individual support, so they can make that change over time, because it's not going to happen in one month or two months.
Thank you. Deb, did you have a question?
Yeah, there was a January 28th meeting scheduled, the Spanish language session. I didn't see that in the report.
Oh, I know it's, I know I sent it, it's in the report.
I saw it, translated, yeah. It's later. Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, it was all interpreted and included.
They found it, thank you.
Thanks.
Does anyone else have any other questions? Irv, did you have any questions?
I would like, if I could thank the agency that worked with us on the Spanish-speaking session, and they did an incredibly excellent job on everything that everyone said, so we thank them as well.
Could I just say, that was Angela Burke and Rosana Salazar from the Collaborative for Educational Services.
Yes, thank you, that was, we appreciate it.
So if there's no other questions, I appreciate you coming, Ralph and Candace, for talking to us tonight, and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So Sarah, I'm waiting to hear from you tomorrow.
Yes, well, we won't know until we show up at the meeting link, if we have a quorum, that's the way it goes.
That's, I won't be on standby, it's not a problem.
Thank you.
Okay. And certainly, we wish the search committee well, their work, and we're here and available to them. And again, we want to thank you and wish you the best, because this next decision that you all make, we know is very, very important, so thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Irv, did you want to, I believe that is all we have for the--
So before we go, are there any questions, observations, et cetera, that the committee would like to address to the search committee? All right, hearing none. Then if there's no other business, then Union 26 will adjourn, and I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved?
So all those in favor? Irv Rhodes, yes? Sarah Marshall?
Yes.
Bridgette?
Yes.
William?
Yes.
We stand adjourned.
So next on the agenda is the chair's update, and as our chair is not here, there's not a chair's update. School committee announcements, does anyone have any school committee announcements? Go ahead, Sarah.
Very briefly, I'm appointed to the negotiating committee with the United Food and Commercial Workers, and that has begun. That's all. Just wanted to tell you that's underway.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Jennifer?
So I'm on the APSME bargaining team, and APSME negotiations have also begun, and the meetings with the APSME reps has begun, and we'll be having a series of meetings over the next few months.
Any other school committee announcements?
I just wanted to say, I'm on the Equity Committee, and we've met since the last time we had a meeting. We had a really robust conversation about what the new, like, updated mission statement would look like and what the composition of the committee would be, and I just think that it's off to a great start, we'll be continuing to work on that at the next meeting.
Thank you. Any other announcements? So next on the, oh, go ahead.
William, do you want to say anything about the Title IX Committee?
You can, oh, I'll let you, sorry.
Okay, so we elected William as the chair of the Title IX Committee, the investigative reports, and we had good attendance at that meeting. Mindy Jam also attended, she's going to try and attend all the time and stick with it, and we decided to start by really taking the report apart and looking at the different patterns--
Different conclusions.
The different patterns and conclusions that the report came to, and try and line them with best practices, and also what the specific role of school committee is, so that we're taking action wherever it's within our purview to do, whether that's supervision of the superintendent, whether it, I'm sure there'll be even maybe budget suggestions, and certainly policies around all sorts of different aspects related.
And that meeting is again tomorrow night.
Thank you.
So next agenda item is approval of minutes, and I don't believe we have any minutes to approve. So we'll move on to the warrant report, which we do have some.
Sorry, I just have to load it on my computer. On 2/26/24, I, William Scher, authorized by my signature payables in the amount of $557,646.27, general funds expenses of $480.78.52, revolving fund expenses of $36,889.58, and a grant fund expense of $16,783.10, and zero in gifts. That was also capital for $23,895.07. On 2/21/2024, I, William Scher, authorized by my signature payables in the amount of $836,928.77, it included general fund expenses of $836,928.77, and that is it for that. On 2/14/2024, I, William Scher, authorized by my signature payables in the amount of $654,028.50, included general fund expenses of $652.55.17, lunch revolving fund expense of $587.25, and a grant fund expense of $885.08. On 2/14, I, William Scher, oh, that's the same one I read, I apologize. On 2/7/2024, I, William Scher, authorized by my signature payables in the amount of $300,523.24, it included general fund expenses of $272,529.04, revolving fund expenses of $14,365.18, grant fund expenses of $13,329.02, and gifts of $300. And I, William Scher, authorized my signature in the amount of, excuse me, $819,711.11, And this is the last one. On 1/24/2024, I, William Scher, authorized by my signature payables in the amount of $753,694.44, it included general fund expenses of $335.530.38, revolving fund expenses of $1,258.50, stabilization of $16,905.56, and capital of $400,000. And I, do we have any gifts--
I believe so.
--to accept? Okay. And then the next item is we have public comments. We are having later in the meeting the budget hearing, and so if you have any public comments about the budget hearing, I ask you to hold those comments until we get to the budget hearing section of our meeting. So right now, we're open to other public comments that do not deal with the budget. Just understand that when you come up, please tell us your name, the town of your residence, and our affiliation to the district, the topic that you plan to address, and you'll be allowed a maximum of three minutes to speak, and speakers may not assign their time to another speaker. So I invite anyone who wants to come up that would like to make a public comment now.
Good evening. My name is Vincent O'Connor. I've served on six or seven town committees over a period of about 45 years, and in-town meeting for about that same time. This evening, I'd just like to inform the school committee, give them an overview of material I presented to the city council in two separate sessions. Three proposals for raising funds for both the schools and the municipality. Two of them directly concern the schools, the other involves the university's traffic impact on the town and the need for additional money for roads, which could free money up for other services and activities. And that's really not an issue for the school committee, but the, two of the possible sources of revenue, which collectively could amount to $5 to $7 million annually, do involve the schools. The first is the need to get Amherst College involved in funding local activities. The first is the need to get Amherst College involved in funding local activities. As many of you know who have lived here for a while, the Amherst College dormitories that were built before the 1980s were fraternities, and after Amherst College became co-ed, it became very clear that having fraternities for men and dormitories for women was not an appropriate mixture. The college made the fraternities an offer that they did not refuse, and subsequently -- and the fraternities were on the town's property tax rolls. But as a result of them becoming dormitories, they became nonprofit educational functions and essentially became tax exempt. The college had, over five years, reduced it by 20% each year till late in the 80s. They took those properties completely off the tax rolls, and for over 30 years, they have contributed almost zero to the town. The most appropriate contribution they could make is to the school districts, and my proposal is that they contribute between 3/4 of a million and $1 million from their $3 billion endowment. They would -- you would be asking them to contribute 1/2 of 1/10th of 1% of their endowment to fund local schools. A very appropriate thing. Williams College and a whole lot of other private colleges do the same thing. This college is almost unique in its nonparticipation in local government. And my proposal is that the school committee and appoint members and the City Council appoint members to jointly negotiate with Amherst College that kind of a contribution. The second issue is much simpler, which is that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has the most inclusive, almost universal healthcare service in the country, but what they don't have is a single payer that would reduce the cost of those services. There has been legislation filed annually for a number of years to create a Medicaid-for-all, a Medicare-for-all program for Massachusetts.
So, if you could wrap it up, because you're over your time.
And what I'm asking the school committee is to have a couple of members who could work with the administration and some outside resources in the community to develop a cost estimate of the savings that would occur if this program, Medicare-for-all, were initiated in Massachusetts.
Susanna, is given Vincent more time?
And.
Point of order. We can't give more time, and you're over your time.
Yeah. But I think it's crucial to understand that every year, those costs increase, the teachers' contributions to the costs increases, and the way to reduce those costs, both the base and the increases, is for the schools to arm both our legislations.
Point of order. We should recess if the speaker will not stop.
Okay. It is time for you to move on, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
We have your statement.
All this is presented in writing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
I'm Ruthie Killohill. I work at Fort River School and a resident, but I'm just asking, is there any possibility to move the comments up about the budget, because we have some high school students here, and I love that to hear their voice, but I don't want them to stay up late.
We only have a couple more things to do before we get to that. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other public comments that's not to do with budget right now?
I mean, yeah, I'm going to talk about budget, but people cannot see time anymore. Like, if I am here, but I'm not going to.
It's on our policy not to concede time, so I led with that tonight, not -- we would not be able to concede time tonight.
Oh, that's.
Because we have a lot of people here to give comments on the budget.
Okay.
Does anyone else have any public comments at this time to make?
Thank you. My name is Maria Kapicki. I live in Amherst. I'm speaking tonight to encourage the Regional School Committee to bring the work of the High School Track and Field Project into the light. Aside from deciding to change the debt authorization, which was discussed at multiple meetings, none of the decisions regarding this multimillion-dollar project have occurred in public. This committee was only notified after the RFP for a designer was already written and launched. Neither you nor the public were afforded the opportunity to offer any insights or amendments. Likewise, neither the committee nor the public was allowed to be present when the two applicants were interviewed or allowed to offer feedback before a decision was made on their selection. A member of the boosters knew which company had been awarded the contract before you were told about it. You had no input into that contract, and the designers have since met at least once with interim superintendent. This is a public project on a public ad set that will be paid for almost exclusively with municipal funding, and no one in this room, except for the interim superintendent, has even set eyes on the people who will be designing a track and field for the people you represent and who will be served by this facility. If some subset of you have had access, it was not public, and it was not extended to all. This lack of participation is not dictated by law. It's just what you have allowed to happen. Mount Graylock Regional School District in Williamstown, Massachusetts engaged in a far different process and successfully broke ground on a very similar project last year. There, the school committee played an active role throughout the process. A project building committee was comprised of school committee, administration, and athletic department representatives who held public meetings with their design team. The full school committee was kept apprised all along the way and took votes at each significant milestone, including the hiring of the owner's project manager and designer. This type of collaborative, transparent approach could and should be demanded and adopted by the ARPS Regional School Committee. There are so many questions about how this work will be conducted. Please ask them, and make sure you get complete answers from the people doing the work. The best results will be possible when multiples perspectives and experience are integral to the process. Please make sure those voices are part of the project. This is not a straightforward building repair or a repaving. It is a large, public, capital construction project, and the discussions and decisions need to occur in public. Please assert your rights and responsibilities to oversee this project and give everyone the opportunity to fully know what is being said and done. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Board, just a point of order. I don't see a second public comment on the agenda. I'm just wondering when it's going to occur.
It's going to occur during the budget hearing.
During or after?
It is the -- it essentially is the hearing.
Correct.
So, this public comment is for non-related budget stuff?
Correct.
Okay, so I want to talk about race. You know, you guys are not taking this seriously, that there's an attack on black people in this district. They -- you know, what's ironic is that people feel emboldened, and they just want to attack. We have an amazing A.D. who went home early because she received some very troubling email for people attacking her. I tell her she's too good for this district, and she needs to find another job. Do you know what I'm saying? Because people just feel -- we, as black people, know we're held to a higher standard. She and I work together, so we make sure our Ts are crossed and our Is are dotted. And people just want to attack and call into question people's integrity. And white people can't be trusted. I'm sorry. You know what I'm saying? Doreen, everybody hitting upon Doreen. I can tell you this, Doreen isn't a problem. It's systemic. Amherst is like a cesspool. It is amazing. Somebody said, there's -- I won't call the other district, but Amherst is a very close second to being one of the most corrupt districts. And I know you guys get tired of seeing my face, but we're trying to raise the alarm because Amherst is going downhill very fast, and when it gets to the point, we don't want you to blame the black people because you guys are not paying attention. There is a problem in Amherst. We're asking the superintendent to hire a HR director. He's ignoring us. Instead, there's no money in the district, right? But then he hired a white man to oversee HR, oversee the black people, paying them whatever, $100 an hour to do what? Sit there? Doesn't make sense. I mean, I would suggest you guys go and Google Houston Public Schools because it is like the same thing that's happened, that, I mean, they're a multi-million dollar, $2 million budget, but some of the inefficiencies that they're talking about is happening right here. And one of the things that they did was reach out to some organization to come in and do some kind of, you know? Auditing. And I'm going to tell the union, spend the money. We need to do a forensic accounting. Follow the money because some tricky stuff is happening in this district. And again, you know, we're asking you. I just want to tell people publicly to leave Victoria alone. Thank you.
You can come up.
I'm Mangla Jagdish. What else do I need to say?
Just what town or affiliation to the district.
I live in Amherst. I am also a second grade teacher at Weldwood School. I didn't prepare a comment today, but the presentation about the stakeholders' report triggered some things for me that I'd like to share with school committee. The current consultants indicated the situation at the middle school was the newest incident that brought up a lot of feelings. Well, that may technically be true, but what happened is just the most recent manifestation of troublesome leadership that has been in place, that had been in place for at least five years before this incident came to light. The school district has not addressed the systemic issues, and Georgia mentioned some of them, that made what happened possible, and these things need to be addressed now by school committee and by the current interim superintendent. These are not issues that we can wait years to hope that things can get better. I was really troubled by them saying we need to give the next superintendent a chance. Well, we need to make our district right now a place where the next superintendent has a chance, and we don't have that right now. And I am looking to you, school committee, to really help make that happen because the oversight that needs to be in place is not in place. And Georgia just mentioned one thing, but there is so much more, and you all really need to take a more active role in what is going on financially, what is going on with what the administration is doing, and how that goes down to the next level administration, how that goes down to the teachers in the district, and how that goes down to the students in the district. Because this is a big deal right now, and it is not being addressed, and it is being swept under the rug and under the rug and under the rug. And I guess that's it. We need school committee to take a more active role in addressing the way the school district is being run.
Can I come back for the budget hearing?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Irene LaRoche. I live in Sunderland. I'm a teacher at the middle school. I do want to bring back your attention to the APA statement that we already shared around the concerns we have about the principal search at the middle school. Very pleased to see that you are spending quite a lot of attention on and energy on the superintendent's search, and I ask you to look at the hiring processes that we have had that have been highly problematic for many years, that are continuing to happen in the current principal search at the middle school. There are only two staff members from the middle school on the committee. The majority of the committee is administrators, most of them from central office, who have nothing to do with our school. They are housed in our school, and they are never upstairs in our rooms, talking to students, engaging with us. There was no effort to look for questions that the middle school staff or topics, as you have seen, happen with the superintendent's search, nothing to look at what are important critical issues, nothing regarding pedagogy or middle school developmental needs, nothing regarding what happened in our school over the last several years with failed administration. It's alarming to me that the search is just happening as if everything has been fine, and it's a typical search. So, I urge you to look into it. We've already sent you our statement from the APA. We have not had any response from Superintendent Slaughter to ask, when we asked for a meeting about the composition of the committee, and the interviews have begun.
I do have one voicemail I will play. Do you want to scroll through first?
I can.
I think it's downloading, sorry.
It's okay. Let's see. I don't know. I didn't look at these to see if somewhere specifically budget-related or if they were mixed. I think they're mixed, but. At the top, sorry. At the beginning here. This is technically budget-related, but.
Okay.
Let me know if it's scrolling too fast.
Dr. Slaughter and Mr. Share?
Yes?
Debbie?
Oh, yes.
Debbie, we can hear you.
Sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to let you know that I did listen to the four voicemails, and they are all related to budget.
Thank you for doing that, Debbie. We'll play them at the budget hearing.
Debbie, are you speaking again? Sorry, we can't hear you. No.
Unfortunately, we can't spread them out. I apologize.
Should we finish up live public comments?
I thought we were done, so I apologize. And that's all of the emails we received for public comments. If anyone else in the audience would like to make a public comment not about the budget now, they can.
My name's Alex Lopez. I'm a resident of Amherst, parent to three kids at Crocker, para at Summit, and also executive board member of the APA. I just wanted to speak really briefly before we head into the budget section because I'm not used to being in this space and it feeling like this. This library regularly is a place that students come to, where our staff comes to. I've learned from our library and things that I bring home and listen to while driving around with my kid on the way to the dentist this morning and have bonding moments, and it really is shocking to me. And it really is shocking to me, hearing what people are talking about right now, that every day I see the incredible work that our students and staff do in confronting issues of racism, in confronting issues of oppression, in confronting inequalities and inequities in our everyday lives. And we haven't even gotten to talking about the money yet. And in just the brief conversation we've had about our leadership, about our administration, about the priorities that are being set, we're failing. And so I want that to set in for a second, because if we're struggling with issues of race, with issues of gender, with issues of sexuality, with keeping our students and our staff safe, we're about to have a conversation where y'all are presented with a choice on whether we wanna get better or move backwards. And so let's let that set in for a second, because things are only gonna get worse.
Any other public comments? Okay, so now we're gonna move on to the second part of our meeting, the new and continuing business. The first item is the school calendar approval for the 2024-2025. I believe that the option two was posted on the minutes. Does anyone want to discuss that? Jennifer?
So there were two options, three options, but really two feasible options that were presented last time, and now just option two is posted. So does that, do I presume that that's the preferred option?
Doc, do you wanna speak to that?
Yeah, so in our contract, we present proposed calendars to the union for recommendations from them. If it is to start before the first of September, they are required to lend approval. We gave two options this year for pre-Labor Day or pre-September 1st start. This was the preferred recommended by the APA.
Go ahead, Jennifer.
Great, thank you. So I had asked, I think, all of the PGOs to send an email to their lists, asking people to give us input on the two options, options two and three. And some of them emailed me directly, and some of them emailed the whole committee, so you might have gotten some of them. But we received over 50 emails, and around 35 of them preferred option two, and a smaller number, 19 preferred option three. So I'm glad to see that the APA is aligned with that as well. Option two is unusual and something new to try. And I think that the feedback was very positive from the people who preferred option two. It has a Monday start date in the last week of August, and it has sort of an extra-long winter break, which causes some issues, but also causes some, results in some opportunities for positive things. The way I look at it, you know, I had concerns about families who need childcare in those extra two weeks in January. But several people pointed out to me that there's either two days in January where families will need childcare, or there's two extra days in August that families will need childcare because of that last week of August. Having a Wednesday start as opposed to a Monday start, like, there's trade-offs either way. So given that the APA's preference is number two, and most of the emails prefer number two, I think we should give number two a try.
Does anyone else have any comments? Tillman?
Yeah, everything that Jennifer said. But one comment that I received that stuck with me was the question, if in the future, not for this one, we would wanna consider aligning with the spring break of the colleges, where many people, with many, whom many people are affiliated with. So just for the future, I think there is some value to that, because with the current February break here, March break in the colleges, and then April break, it's really not possible for any families that have affiliation with both the high school or the schools here and the colleges to have come and vacation.
Deb?
I've always wanted that as well, but my understanding is the original reason to have February break was to close the schools during a time where heating costs are high.
That's not a problem.
Maybe that's a misunderstanding, but yeah.
Maybe the colleges should pony up, and then we'll prove to their demands.
Point of order.
Someone pass a motion.
I move that we approve calendar number two with a pre-Labor Day, with the earlier start and longer winter break, option number two.
Second.
Any discussion? We take a vote? Irv?
Abstain.
Sarah Marshall?
Aye.
Deb Leonard?
Yes.
Tillman?
Aye.
Bridgette?
Yes.
Jennifer Shaw?
Yes.
William Scher?
Aye.
So that is one, two, three, four, five, six ayes and one abstention. So it is the calendar two passes. So next thing on the agenda item is the school choice hearing. What'd you say? Please, yes.
So by default, in the state of Massachusetts, all districts are considered school choice districts unless you vote to say no to that. And so in order to give the community an opportunity to provide that feedback to you that they don't wanna be a school choice district, or for you guys to sort of debate that topic as well, then we have a school choice hearing for that conversation. I would recommend that we stay a school choice district. It has served us well. It continues to serve us well. It gives opportunity to provide a little revenue, and we try to do it in a way that does not add additional cost or not material additional cost to the district. But certainly, we are, we're not compelled to have the hearing, but if we're going to say no, we do have to put it on the agenda. So this gives people an opportunity to say, hey, we don't wanna be school choice anymore.
Any discussion or questions about school choice? Okay, then we can move on to the proposed fiscal year 25.
Point of order. It's a hearing. I think we have to allow the public to comment if they wish.
It's not a hearing, unless we were gonna say no.
Actually, school choice is a hearing.
It's listed as a hearing.
I apologize. So if anyone would like to make a public comment on the school choice, they're more than welcome to come up and make that comment now.
I just have a question about how school choice works for the regional district for feeder schools like Shute's, Berry, Leverett, and Pelham, who might have kids who are choiced into those schools from towns that aren't in the region? And if school choice went away, what would happen to those kids?
I can answer that. Please.
So currently, for the next couple of years, the students that are school choice in all four elementary schools that feed into our regional school district are eligible and accepted into our regional schools as school choice students. However, the state changed the structure of school choice, and so it's no longer guaranteed for those, and it was grandfathered in to be, and I think it's two years away. In that circumstance, if we remain a school choice district, what would happen is kids that are in those four elementary schools, their families would have to apply to become school choice entering seventh grade, and we'd have a lottery for those as opposed to automatically getting a seat. So in the short term, they're automatically in. And in the future, we would have to resource the sort of system where we would have to have all of them apply, and then we'd do a lottery for seats in the regional district at that point. I did reach out to the state representative to ask if they could provide an option within the regulation law that allows us to negotiate an agreement with those feeder communities, because I think for us, it's worked well to have them automatically feed through, because we can plan accordingly and a whole bunch of things. I know there are regional districts where they adamantly didn't wanna have that. They have circumstances where the feeder schools swamp the regional school in a way that's counterproductive. So I think having the inability to have either option would be best, so that if we wanted to keep doing it the way we're doing it, we could. But that's not where it sits at the moment. But anyway.
Thank you. So now we move on to the proposed FY25 Regional School District budget hearing. Doc, did you wanna start?
Thank you. Share my screen. So I'll just give a little short presentation of a few things, recapping where we were in January, some updates that you guys have been aware of, but maybe the broader public isn't as aware of, and just talk through a few of the items. And then talk to specifics about where we're at at this point in the process. And then, of course, we'll hear from the committee as they respond to that.
Excuse me, can you pull your mic closer?
Thank you. I had it away from me on purpose, so I wasn't breathing into it, but I appreciate that feedback. So just to talk a little bit about, you know, the overall process that we go through. We start in October, November. We start putting together, you know, estimates for what we think certain costs are gonna be. We meet with our health insurance folks, see what that looks like. We meet with principals and other folks to identify, you know, areas of the budget and things that are impacting the budget that need to be considered as we move forward. And we typically work from what's called the level services budget, which is a circumstance where we take essentially what we have as status quo at the moment and to roll that forward in the new year. So if we know what the steps and colas and that are part of our contracts are involved, we do that projection of that. If we know there are certain expenses that we have information about or we have estimates of, we include that in our projection of our expenses. Likewise, we're looking at our revenue sources from the various communities and other sources like Chapter 70, et cetera, to estimate what kind of resources are available to us. In November, December, we get feedback from our communities about budget guidance, what information, they're doing the same sort of thing in their budgets, and we get some information where they think their revenues are and what their capacity is to fund our regional schools. We get into January, February, we start getting into more specifics. We start to get the governor's budget in late January. That helps us. We usually get our updated health insurance premium for the new year at the end of January, beginning of February. And so we, you know, adjust and refine during that same time of late January. We generally give you a draft budget, which you saw on the 23rd of January this year. Then we come into this time of year, we do a hearing. And then, of course, in March, we are compelled to vote the budget in our regional agreement. We have to vote a budget 40 days before the first town meeting, which is in the last Saturday of April. And if you work your way back, that necessitates a vote of a budget for the regional schools basically just before the 17th of March, which I think is a Sunday. So that's, our meeting is on the 12th. And so that'll be when we actually have to vote a budget that then will be included in the various town meetings and town council actions. Additionally, you know, we have along the way four towns meetings where we meet with the select boards, finance committees, and town council. Of course, school committee members are also invited, you guys, as well as the local member communities. School committees are invited to four towns meetings where we discuss the circumstances of what we're finding out relative to our budget, projecting that forward. Most of the conversation is focused on the assessments, both for operating budgets as well as capital, and the capacity of each of the communities to meet those obligations and the implications of that, and an ongoing dialogue of consensus building toward the assessment as well as towards budgets that we're gonna bring to those town meetings and the town council as the spring wears on. And so the most recent four-town meeting was on the 17th of February, which is the first Saturday of the break week. One thing I'll share with you is that on the, so as discussed at this meeting on the 23rd, the question had been raised, and understandably so, you know, whether or not the guidance from Amherst could be altered. Amherst had originally come out in their initial guidance to the, to all of their departments, the elementary budget, the library budget, et cetera, of a 3% across-the-board increase. The budget coordinating group met on the 16th, which was the Friday, before the four towns meeting on the 17th. Town of Amherst had reworked their estimates of their expenses and their resources that they feel are coming into the town, or as best they can guess them at this point. And there was an area of their expense budget that was noticeably lower. And so they gave the change in guidance to be 4%, which was welcome news for the regional budget and all the other budgets as well. For the regional budget, then, we could be at that 4% level, that sort of guardrail that we use in our assessment method to limit the maximum sort of increase or decrease a given community is expected to tolerate in a given year of assessment change. And so that made a pretty significant impact on the assessments, but then also on what we were looking at relative to our expenses and our resources. That increase from 3% to 4% for the Town of Amherst is about $177,000 or so. And I'll show in a subsequent slide what the impact was on the other three communities. I'll get into that in just a minute. But just to speak to, you know, refinements in expense projections, most of them haven't changed since we've spoken on the 23rd. One thing that we did have was our health insurance was projected at 12%. The actual numbers come in, it's 9.74. That reduced our cost. We'll see that when we get to the sort of final slide where we talk about, you know, adjustments and additions and reductions that we're gonna need to make to balance between expenses and resources available. Also looked at, you know, as we go through this process, you know, revisit and re-review, you know, all of the budget lines. We found that the utility expense was an area that we could make an additional adjustment. We felt we overprojected what we thought we'd need for utilities costs, and so we were able to bring that to bear and lower that cost a little bit as we worked through this. And so I'm gonna zoom in on this a little bit, see if we can get that to display a little bit. This is, you know, a sort of consolidated budget that collapses some of the detail from, you know, our detailed budget has about 1,000 lines in it. What this does is sort of collect those into budget areas. And so, you know, a couple of things I'll just point out as a general metric is that our salaries, which is this top section, but our personnel costs in total. So salaries, benefits, et cetera, is about 80, 85% of our budget year over year. So most of our spending is on people. And that's understandable, because that's the kind of business that we're in. That's the kind of thing that we do, is to work with people, and it requires a lot of people to do that work. And so in the top portion, you see the impact of projecting forward with staffing levels that we have currently, and, you know, grades and steps for, or steps and colas for folks in those different positions, what that impact looks like. One thing I'll note here is certain types of resources we have available to us, like school choice, are not, by virtue of our honors, are not allowed to be on our sort of revenue listing. So we reduce our expenses by virtue of that. So we've applied our school choice in this area, which does lower our regular education by the amount we've used for school choice, which is $850,000. Similarly, we have some support from UMass to support our district as well. That has a small effect there. In our expense lines, we leverage some circuit breaker funding, which we get. So for extraordinary special education expenses, the state does provide some additional support to the district, which we then utilize in a subsequent year to help offset some of our special education costs. Those are all kind of baked into these numbers that lower the numbers a little bit as far as what our tax-appropriated budget is gonna be. So this isn't the totality of all that we spend. This is most of what we spend, and it's primarily, and is reflecting the sort of tax revenue and resources from appropriation that we're using. In the expense section of the budget, you know, we've gone through, and like I said, we go through as closely as we can. We try to make reasonable expectations and guesses when we have to as to what costs are gonna be. A number of our software have gone to fixed increase model, where every year they add 4%. We've got some others that are variable, and we try to monitor those and see what our trends have been, and adjust them down or up accordingly relative to our spending needs. And I will say, in years like this that are very difficult, there's a lot of areas, a lot of lines of the budget, you know, where we hold them steady. We don't increase them, because we know that we wanna provide as much support for those things like materials for the classroom, et cetera, as best we can. Obviously, in an inflationary period, you know, the dollar doesn't Obviously, in an inflationary period, you know, the dollar doesn't go as far. And so it does limit us a little bit in that regard. And so as we go through this, what we see here is, again, this number of 36,996,441. Part of why that looks a little bigger than what you've seen is that the ESAR money or the COVID money that we're applying this year in fiscal '24, in the current year, we're applying about a million, a little bit, about $1,100,000 of COVID money to support the budget. The remaining funds we have to support the budget is about $500,000. And so that's included in that number right here, the 2189. That $500,000 of support from those ESAR funds are in there in helping to reduce expenses. The ESAR money is available for use until the end of September of 2024. So we will be spending every dime we have between now and then. And particularly, you know, those resources that we don't use in the current year we'll leverage as the early part of fiscal '25 to support our budget and preserve the other resources that we have for other things and support our budgets as we move forward. And so this number looks, you know, a little bit large. And part of it's the $500,000 that's ESAR funding there. And then the other part of that is, after taking into account the change in AMERST support that they could bring and the subsequent change in support that Chootsbury would carry as well. The gap between resources and expenses went from just, you know, 1.88 million down to about 1.68 million, to about $200,000 difference. And as I go into the revenue here, I'll shrink this a bit so you can see it a little bit, a couple of things. That was too small, sorry. So we had estimated that the governor's budget, given the nature of what we thought was happening with regard to state revenues as far as tax collection, that sort of thing, we took a fairly conservative approach to what we thought would happen with the governor's budget. We were, our estimate for $30 per student, which is the basis in the Student Opportunity Act for a district like ours, was what was in the governor's budget. So that was on target. Our estimate for regional transportation was pretty close to what we expected as well. Again, it has been something that's increased over the last couple of years, but as our expenses have gone up, but the reimbursement is going to hold at a little lower level. So our total dollars is going to be about where we projected in that regard. Other estimates for revenues were, as best we can tell at this point, with the governor's budget, pretty much on the mark. And of course, there I mentioned that they updated the budget projections on the 16th. That allowed for increased support, and it changes the assessments a little bit for the four towns. So looking at that, and this is just a little tricky chart to read, so I'll just have people focus on this blue column to the right here. We have the 36,496,441. That's taking out the $500,000 of ESAR money that reduced our expense. And so then we see the different sources of funding, Chapter 70, what we think it's going to be, transportation reimbursement. We do some work for, that is eligible for reimbursement by Medicaid, and so that generates about $120,000 a year for us. The charter reimbursement for new students going out to charter. So, and really, the way to think about this is seventh graders. So seventh graders that may never have set foot in, say, the AMERST schools, but because they're new to the region in seventh grade, they are new students. And therefore, there is a reimbursement for charter students in the first couple of years that they are out of the district. Our charter reimbursement is about $300,000. In our expense line, what we're paying in total for charter is up close to $2 million. We have a fairly steady level of enrollment in the charter schools. It's held fairly steady over the last several years. So these projections, you know, they do change each year, but they sort of hold relatively in line with each other, but we do have to adjust those. An estimate for interest revenue, and then our excess and deficiency, which is the same as free cash if those folks that know municipal budgets, that's resources we have, essentially savings from previous years that we hold and then use to help support our budget in subsequent years. We're taking a steady approach to that. The 280 we'd like to not spend, it's a contingency funding. So if there's an extraordinary expense, that's what we want to use that for. And if we can, we try to hold off on that. The other 600 is assessment money that the four towns have paid to the district and had been able to be saved. E&amp;D does have limitations on how much of it you can kind of stack up. You can't sort of hold an infinite amount. They want you to spend the money on education, so you have a limit of 5% of your operating budget, which for us is, excuse me, in the $1.7 million range, I believe. So we have to leverage that as best we can. And so we try to regularly sort of budget a chunk of money from E&amp;D to support it. And as we work through a given active fiscal year, we try to, in a sense, try to replenish that or balance that and not have us, you know, spend all our savings either. And so what happens is when you total up those revenues and you subtract it from our initial, then you have an amount to be assessed to the four towns, and that's this number here, this 22,730,943. It's just an 4% overall increase. We have three communities that are at 4%, two of which actually hit the guardrails, AMERST being at that because they had funding to go to 4%. What that did with Chootsbury had their assessment go up from what we had originally talked to them about in both December and in January. And so that went up about $18,000. What that results in is that in order to balance between the revenues, the total revenues available, which is this, you know, 22 million and this 12 million, is we have to take this number, this 1.6 or 1.7 million, out of our expenses in some way, shape, or form in order to be in balance between resources available and expenses incurred. And so that's a pretty big number, and a pretty uncomfortable number. So what I have here in this next slide is, you know, the current proposal of ways to get to that balance. Listen, on the first line is the ESAR funds that we applied. I want to make sure I mention those, that's that $500,000. But it's not in the total because we've already taken it off in the previous slides. What I will note in particular is the budget adjustment section is about, let me make that just a little bit bigger, sorry. The budget adjustments are either changes to costs that we've incurred. In other words, you know, for example, the health insurance line, we know that our health insurance was at 12%, it's now 9.74. That reduces our expenses by about $72,000. So that's a change off the top. It's in, and so these are ways in which we are shifting either a source of funding or reduced expense that happened as a result of a refined understanding of what those expenses are. When you look at the FTE that show negative, it's not that these people are being caught in this section. This is a representation of the way in which we're paying for those people is changing. So one of the things we've done over the last couple of years is we've had COVID money or ESAR money available to us as we've allowed some of our revolving funds to grow their balance a little bit so that we would have those funds available when we got to this place and needed to make some significant reductions. We would have those resources available. So we have a couple of programs in the high school that have students from outside our district come in, they pay a tuition to the district. We collect that into revolving fund. It can be used to then support that program. So any revolving funds have to be targeted to the program that they support. There's limits on which things can have revolving funds, which can't. And you do have to spend the resources on that program. So we're able to shift four staff, four paraprofessional staff onto those resources and off of appropriation. As we are going through in the last few weeks, we recognize we had a little more IDA grant money. IDA is special education funding. It's an entitlement grant from the federal government. We recognize we had a little more funding available to support our budget, so that helped reduce our expenses by another $100,000. I mentioned health insurance. I've mentioned earlier the utilities expense projection lowered that by 12,500. Food service in years past is, again, is a revolving fund. It is, in an idealized circumstance, it would be such that it would be wholly self-supporting. So when we were charging kids for lunch and collecting those and reimbursements from the federal government because we're in the national school lunch program, et cetera, the goal was to have the program be self-sufficient. It never was, and so we always had a component of our expense budget that would help, you know, support that program and make it whole. Over the last couple of years, with the change to fully-supported meals for all students without cost to them, there's a couple of things that have happened. Our program's much more efficient, we serve, we have much more participation, which makes our cost per meal much less, the reimbursements are better. Those programs, we had opportunity to build balance there, and so we did. And so as a result, we don't need as much support from the operating budget to support that program, and we've reduced that significantly. We'd made a big reduction in the first go-round in late January, and then here's an additional reduction of that support from the budget. Likewise, we have folks who use our buildings for various events. We often charge them a fee. We put that into revolving fund to support our buildings. Sometimes we do things like by pool filters and chlorine and/or light fixtures or furniture, but we also support staff that provide that. And so we're able to shift a little bit of a custodial salary to that revolving fund to reduce the expense from our operating budget. And then the last one on the list here is, we have an intensive needs program administrator. This is a position that was funded at 70% by the region and 30% in the AMERST elementary budget. We're shifting that to a 50-50. So AMERST is, it's more reflective of the demands of the work. And so that reduces the FTE that's supported by the regional school district, and so that helps reduce $25,000 out of the expenses for the regional budget. One thing I will also point out right at this point is that we use a lot of round numbers in these, sort of, in that middle column. You know, things like $38,000 for custodial salary or $25,000 for paraprofessionals is an average that we use. For teachers, we use a 70,000 number. That's sort of the general predictive amount for folks. It's in the right neighborhood of cost. It's also sufficiently conservative to not overestimate savings or overestimate costs. So we're just using that as a metric for doing the calculations here. So that's the stuff that is adjusting the budget in a favorable way and reducing the amount of resources that are needed from appropriation. And have, although it looks like 4.45 people are not working for the district, they are, they're just being funded from a different source. As we get into this budget reduction section, on the other hand, this is actual things that are not going to be able to be done and things that are not going to be able to be funded and therefore positions that will not be in the district if this comes to fruition as written here. And I will say, at this point, we're still fairly broad with the definitions in a lot of these categories, and that is twofold. One is, you know, it's early stages, we're still developing what we want to do. And there's a lot to be learned, and we want some feedback from folks around some of this, but it is indicative of the kinds of change we're needing to make. Specifics about, you know, departments or specific job titles are less specific here because we're still in the process of sorting through some of that. So for example, central administration, you know, it is 2.12 FTE and $210,000 in salaries. That's not necessarily tied to, you know, 2.12 positions. Now, part of that's a weird fraction because we have staff there shared across districts, and so the fractions of them that are held by the regional district are here. I think how we assign tasks amongst central office staff are being evaluated and assessed. But we are going to make that level of reduction in our regional budget, in our central administration. The second line is committee action. COLA committee action are all non-unit people, so folks that are not in the unions are committee action. COLA stands for cost-of-living adjustment. We often take a, you know, sort of standard cost-of-living adjustment for all of those staff. We're going to probably need, we will use a tiered approach to that. So there's some folks that would be getting, you know, different levels of cost-of-living adjustment. In that committee action group, it's a very broad spectrum of people. So you've got people like directors and principals, not assistant principals, they're in the union, the APAA union. But you do have folks that provide administrative support in human resources, business office, information systems, the family center, that fall into this category of employee that are not a director or a principal. So there's different levels of staff and different levels of income. And so that's why a tiered approach will be taken relative to that. Next line, custodial staff in the pandemic. The heart of the pandemic, we've added some custodial staff to do some additional cleaning. At this point, we're looking to reduce that a little bit. We are heading into a circumstance where we need a little less staff in that regard. We were able to reduce a couple of staff from our custodial group. Likewise, in clerical, that's a position that was added this year to provide some support. In our middle school, that position will not be able to be sustained moving forward. It's not one we've had for any length of time. It was a circumstance that we wanted to provide some additional support in our middle school around some clerical needs. And so that's why we added it during the year, and we projected it forward. And then as we worked through it, we recognized we couldn't sustain that in the coming year. The next stretch of reductions here are the hardest. The one I will mention first, it's not as hard as the program restructuring summer school. How we deliver summer schools is likely to change the nature, and need of summer school is different than it has been. So we're able to reduce our expenditure in that regard and be a little more targeted in how we deliver that program. The other categories of reduction here with teachers and professionals, staff restructuring, reassignment, that's a much, much more difficult piece of this. This is staff that teach the kids, that are in the classrooms and provide direct support to students. And I think that, you know, the detail of exactly which folks will be an ongoing piece of work as we go through the rest of the spring. We have some requirements by virtue of contract about specific notification individuals. But even between now and two weeks from now, when we'll vote a budget, we'll hope to have a little more clarity on that. But it depends a little bit on registrations that are currently going on. I think the high school registration finishes up on Monday. That'll, you know, indicate some of the choices and where the needs are and where the potential reductions can be made. The, what else do I say about that? Some of the parent educator reductions are based on actual students and student need. And so we have a few, just a slightly smaller number of students that need paraprofessional support. Part of that is included in that, high school parapre educators, but that's not all of that. The long story short, though, on this is that it's fewer teachers. And so things like class size are going to go up. Number of things we can offer, how extensively we can offer some things is going to be less. There's no way to beat around the bush. That is what's going to happen in the regard here. And that's a difficult, you know, conversations and the, you know, ongoing dialogue I've been having with staff about this is, you know, are there other ways to get to 1.689 and do as little of that as possible? And that's, you know, the work and the continuing work that we go through and struggle with about how to do it. These are not fun conversations. They're thought about very, very deeply and carefully, and we're still working through that. The other thing I'll say is as we work through this a little bit further and we get more specific with, you know, actual people and placements and, you know, registration levels and that sort of thing, you know, real dollars start to play in. So actual salaries of people, you know, if you have a retirement, that might often be a person that's, you know, one of the more expensive staff that we have. That means we may not have to cut as much FTE to sort of realize a similar savings. So that's all in the mix. So whether or not it really ends up being exactly, you know, 21.22, it'll probably play out a little different than that as we get to the nitty-gritty of actually figuring out who exactly is where and what. But I don't want to diminish how difficult it is and the impact it will have. It is profound, and I don't want to shortchange that notion or diminish that. And if resources are available of any sort, you know, those, you know, sort of teaching positions in particular are going to be the ones we add back first, absolutely. That's where we're going to try to put resources back into our budget. That central office administration, that, you know, that committee action COLA, those are going to stay just like they are. That's where we're going to try to put resources back into our budget. That central office administration, that, you know, that committee action COLA, those are going to stay just like they are. But, you know, those, those teaching staff are going to be where, where we put any resources that become available from whatever sources, you know, over the ensuing few weeks or, or longer are going to put, put people back in classrooms in that regard. The staff turnover line. What happens there, you know, i- if, if we had one or two reduction, we don't generally have a staff turnover line, but when we have, you know, a number the size of twenty-one, that's, you know, reducing that many staff out of our budget. There are other aspects of, of cost relative to, to employees that we can factor in and, and, and make an estimate for the savings that we have. You know, some of those folks will have health insurance. Some of those folks will, all of them will have life insurance. Life insurance, really small cost, but it's still there. There are differences in what people get paid, et cetera, et cetera. So that's, that's a kind of generic thing. You don't always see it when we do reductions, but when we do reductions of, of this size, we start to have and make an estimate for what those other kinds of, of reductions by virtue of just changing people and, and, and having fewer people impacts our, our budget. So with all of that, it, it does get us to the, to the totality of, of, of one million, six hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars. And so that, that gets us to a balanced, balanced budget. Like I said, this is, this is not a trivial exercise. It's not a, an easy one, and, and any resources that become available will be, you know, applied to restore any of those teaching positions because I think that's where it has the largest impact as far as positive impact, if we can put them back into place. I do have a couple more slides relative to our capital projects. This has not changed since we met last in earlier January. You know, our projection of projects is four hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars of current projects for the coming year. These will hit our, this is authorization for borrowing for these projects. They will then impact our, our assessments for, for debt in subsequent years. So we'll do the work next year. We'll borrow the money the following year, and then it'll start to hit our, hit our books the year after. And so these things on these last two slides have not changed from the twenty-third, so I don't want to spend a lot of time unless people have specific questions. We did do some refinement here to, to moderate some of these numbers. And so that they're not quite as extreme as they were a few weeks ago. I'm realizing that one looks a little off. I think that seven fifty-five could be smaller, but I will fix that. But the fiscal twenty-five number is the same. But I think I'll stop there and see if there's any clarifying questions people have, and then I think then we turn it to the public for their.
Just ask for the school committee to be conscious of the staff that, I mean, the public that's here that wants to make a comment, so if we can keep our comments short and direct. Thank you. I appreciate that. Jennifer Chau.
So I have many questions, but I'm aware that this is a public budget hearing. And as you said, I don't, I don't want to take away from time from members of the public, and our, our goal tonight is to hear from the public. That said, we, as a body, as individuals actually, first saw this information on February seventeenth at the Four Towns meeting, and then we had February break, and now we're here. We're scheduled to vote on this budget in two weeks, March twelfth, because we're obligated to vote on it by March seventeenth. So at what point do we as a committee get to give you the superintendent guidance on what, on what we would like you to do with the budget? And, and a committee that some of us sit on, the Amherst School Committee, we had a public budget hearing, then we had a meeting at which we gave you guidance, and we haven't voted on the budget yet. So where, how does, we, we don't even have school committee deliberation or discussion on tonight's agenda. So we have a, a public hearing, and I want to hear from the public, and then we vote in two weeks. So I don't understand how, I, I don't understand how that's supposed to work.
So the committee's, you know, completely able to have additional meetings if they so choose, if they want to have that, that kind of conversation. And additional, I mean, obviously you can, direct feedback to me, obviously, you know, you can't CC the whole of the committee because that becomes deliberation. So certainly, you know, input and feedback to, to, to me and, and, and to the central office about that is, is certainly one avenue. And it's entirely within the purview of the committee to call another meeting if they feel like they need to have a, a longer, more expansive discussion about this. I will say that, you know, I, I think even in two weeks, the level of detail that we might add to this will, will be still fairly broad. And, and if you go back to, to, you know, some of the, the previous times we've had to make these kind of reductions, we've had things that have said, you know, two point oh FTE and listed four or five different departments that would be potentially involved because it's still in process of figuring out exactly where that, where that lay. And, and, and a lot of this will be fractional changes in, in multiple departments and that sort of thing. But, but again, I think it's, it's entirely within the purview of the committee to, 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 to have an additional meeting to talk about it if they so choose.
So as a follow-up, I want to ask William as the vice chair to inform Sarah Best as the chair that we need, we need another meeting next week. And not, not on Tuesday because it's Pelham.
Because, sorry?
Tuesday is the Pelham School Committee meeting.
Chairman.
I want to thank the town of Amherst to increasing their increase to four percent.
Deb, did you have your hand up?
Yeah. So in terms of the number of students that have changed from last year, do any of these cuts reflect rich attrition? The decline in the population of the student body?
Yeah, so that'll be part of, of the consideration as we, as we go ahead and think about, you know, sort of where to make some reductions. You know, we, we don't have large changes in, in, in student population. You know, it, the difficulty with, with student population decreasing is it, it, it has to decrease a fairly significant amount for it to be a sort of notable change. It tends to be in kind of step mode. We're having moderate changes year over year, but, but that is, you know, going to be reflected in what kids register for, and that will then be informing the decisions. And, and I think in, in, you know, if we were not making reductions, let's say we had a perfectly balanced budget, and this part of the conversation wasn't what we're having, it would behoove us just to, to be cognizant of that about how to staff our departments. So it's part and parcel of that process.
Sarah Marshall.
Very quick question about the capital budget. Is it the case that the funds for every project, even the like twenty thousand dollars, is, is through borrowing? There's no capital reserve that pays for any of these?
We do have a capital stabilization fund. We have not in recent years. We don't have a tremendous amount of money in it, for one thing. That is, I think, a, a direction we could potentially go. There are certainly times if, in the course of, of a given fiscal year, if we are in a positive financial circumstance, we'll sometimes fund a smaller project of ten or fifteen thousand dollars if we have that available and we have the time and can sort of execute. And that is also one of those things if, if when we get to closing out the fiscal year, if there are resources available, one of the options would be to have the school committee vote the money into stabilization and then leverage that for subsequent projects at, at a different time. We, we haven't done a ton of that in recent years. But we do have the stabilization fund. It doesn't have a tremendous amount of money in it, but it can be used for that purpose.
Herb, do you have any questions?
Yeah. I guess, I, I, I want to echo Jennifer. Not having this to discuss amongst ourselves is rather distressing. As A and B, these numbers are just devastating. And I certainly would like to have the opportunity for the committee to discuss this, these fully.
Thank you. Any other questions? Bridgette?
Yeah. I just wanted to say, I guess, we're looking at cutting ten percent of teaching staff across the district, maybe a touch more. That's, that's really, really significant. So I just really think that even before we meet, if there's any way to go back and look at the revenue pieces, any place that we can work on revenue, because this is really devastating. And then, you know, as we wait, I'll send an email, you know, because y'all know what a budget geek I am. I've been in those lines a little too much. I don't want to waste our time with that now, but I just think that you've got to find places that aren't teaching. Ten percent is going to make bigger class sizes. It's going to hurt some of these things that were there in the superintendent's report that people want to see. And frankly, people, you know, families, we need families to move to Amherst, and people only sacrifice to move to Amherst really for the schools. So how do we, or to the region even, you know? So I just want to see other ways out. I don't know what they are yet, but I think that's our work.
Any other questions? So I'd like to open this up to public comment now, and I want to thank you for being patient and waiting. Just to remind you that we, we do have three minutes so that we, for each person, so that we can hear everyone tonight. When you hear the alarm of my phone go off, just please wrap it up. And you don't have to look at me to come up. Just when someone leaves, you can come up to the mic to speak. Are you speaking, Georgia?
So I gave everyone a sheet. And what the sheet represents is one point five million dollars in cuts. Because these are all interim positions, right? And I kind of put, you know, why the position should be eliminated and why it's not necessary. And, you know, it just doesn't make sense to me. You know, we're saying that enrollment is down, but then our administrators are going up. And positions like the I, the ILC position, there's this position that was created two years ago. I really don't know why. That I think was being paid a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. That person who happens to be a very qualified person, a PhD, a black woman, she resigned because of racism in the district. And instead, I did tell Doug to eliminate that position, and HR agreed, but he earmarked it for someone, so he has filled the position. So these are the things, right? A lot of cronyism. People have been promised positions and stuff like that. And Mike on his way out had so much power. He went out and he promoted his friends and gave them raises. These jobs were not, you know, so this is what's frustrating to me because Doreen, as a black woman, is supposed to follow the rulebook. And, but then nobody else, and it's, and this is why I'm saying it's systemic, because I'm telling you, not just me, and I'm not defending Doreen, but even white coworkers have a problem because the district has gotten worse. I mean, it's, it's like you cannot make it up. It is problematic. And I know you guys are tired to some face, honestly. But we're appealing to you. You guys don't realize the power that you have as school committee members, elected members. Doug works for you. You can advise Doug what to do. Eliminate this position. Let him find other ways. He's cutting teaching positions. I mean, it doesn't make sense, but administrative positions are going up. It doesn't make sense. I mean, you guys have the power to do that, and you should. I mean, it is just, I mean, you just cannot make it up. I mean, like I tell you, I wish you guys go. I'm gonna go now, but I really wish you guys would Google Houston. There's a new superintendent, and it's like a mirror. I mean, I would suggest you guys come out to the district some days and just watch the school buses. They're empty instead of doubling up. So we could cut money there. Sometimes five kids on the bus, maybe two. Yeah, you can double up. So there's a lot of waste and inefficiencies in this district. So I would suggest that you guys get more involved, ask questions, and make the right decisions because you have the power. And don't make past practice think as you cannot. He reports to you. He works for you. So don't let him tell you what to do. You tell him what to do. You guys have the power and you can do that. And I wish you all the luck. But if you, if you, I, I mean, on a serious note, you know, like, I think Bridgette said it, that people move here because of the school system. The school system is going to, I mean, it's going downhill. The caliber of people who are leaving, good people. I mean, I wish you guys luck. Seriously. Amherst is not what it was ten years ago, and it's going downhill very fast. And you guys better pay attention. And I want it on record, when shit goes south, I don't want you to blame the black people.
Hi, my name is Julian Hines. I am a resident of the town of Amherst, a student here, a senior at the Amherst Regional High School. And if you can tell by my button, a member of Sunrise Amherst. So I am here to you, in front of you today to express a few interesting things that I've noticed while reviewing the budget, as well as one potential solution that I hope you will implore and look at when evaluating ways to make our budget adjustments without affecting my own learning, my peers' learning, or the teachers behind me. So when I look here, I look in payroll only of the Amherst Regional Public Schools on page eighteen of the proposed FY twenty-five budget. Twenty-eight point three-four percent increase in payroll, central administrative costs. I know I personally have not seen a thirty percent increase in my educational outcomes or educational services that are offered to me here in the district. And I would ask the teachers behind me, have you seen a thirty percent increase in your pay? Okay, great. Thank you. So it's point A. Point B is been a thirty-four percent, or a three, a thirty-four thousand dollar increase in the superintendent's office, a one hundred thirty-one thousand dollar increase in the human resources office, and a total of a two hundred sixty-seven thousand dollar increase in the central administration operating budget. So when we look at Doug's slide, thank you, Dr. Slaughter, for presenting that. We see it would cost us two hundred eighty-four thousand dollars to preserve four teachers at ARMS and a hundred thousand dollars to preserve four paras at the Amherst Regional High School. So I would ask you, when you look at that two hundred sixty-seven thousand dollar increase in central administration, would you consider possibly setting the expense line of central administration to a zero percent increase, no pay increases just this year? And then ending with a two hundred sixty-seven thousand dollar increase to at least preserve four paraeducators at ARHS and possibly even preserve four teachers at the Amherst Middle School. My next point is that I actually learned in my environmental science class this year that the district spends two hundred seven thousand dollars on electricity. So what we could do to offset this cost is put solar on the parking lot that your cars are parked in right now. This solar on the parking lot would allow us to offset that two hundred seven thousand, easily paying for paraeducator positions and paying for many teacher positions within the district. In addition to that, we should consider that rather than spending town ARPA funds or town capital funds, which are in short supplies, we need a public works building, a fire building, new elementary school. Instead, asking Amherst College to pay for that. This is a one-time cost that Amherst College can incur for about a million dollars to pay for the district's electricity costs and offset forty-five percent of the school's carbon emissions. Thank you.
Good evening. Hi, my name's Claire Coco. I teach at the high school this year. I've taught at the middle school. I live in Amherst. I'm a parent of a student at the high school. I'd just like to bring attention to the document submitted by the APAA at Amherst Committee, School Committee. It might be similar to what Georgia just handed out. That details increase in administrative positions. And just in the past, like, four to five years. So at the time when, you know, every year, it seems like there's this urgent crisis of the budget. But yet, you see administrative positions being increased. And I think that, you know, we tried our best to try to assess out what those all were. It, we're not just talking about central office. You also have to look, please, at facilities, at IT, at transportation. I'm, I'm gupsacked that I don't see anything mentioned there. It was two positions in central office. But let's look at what's been added and ask the question to Superintendent Slaughter, justify every position that's been added. Perhaps, perhaps we need them, but they need to be justified at this point because we're talking about cutting student-facing positions. Student-facing positions, a lot of them. Instead of positions created, as Georgia mentioned, just as an example, the intensive learning needs coordinator position. That's just one. That's just one example out of many. So that's just one thing. And I just also wanted to highlight that Superintendent Slaughter said that enrollment numbers have been slightly decreasing over time, and that's a stark difference to what we have heard from years and years of super, former superintendent Morris talking about this dire decrease of student enrollment in the district and how that's and how that necessitates cuts and more cuts. And just that, you know, Superintendent Slaughter mentioned the larger class sizes. That's just one of the negative effects that's going to result. I can tell you that the relationships that I have with my students are the things that get them to school. I've had students say to me, I couldn't come to school, Ms. Coco, because I didn't have a coat and I missed my bus and it was really cold out. And I was like, take, take my, you know, take this extra jacket I have. You know, he trusted me enough to be able to say that. And I'm just getting very upset thinking about how, you know, teachers can only do so much when they have classes of 24 to 26 to 30, perhaps, in their classroom and not have those relationships. The last thing I'd mention is just what can the district do to have a campaign, a strategy, to attract students out of the charters, to bring them back here? And cutting programs and having larger class sizes is not going to attract them. So let's focus on the programming. Let's focus on our personnel that face the students every day. Thank you.
So once again, I'm Alex Lopez. I'm an APA exec board member. I also am a para at Summit here, presumably one of the four whose funding source is going to shift. And also a parent to three kids at Crocker Farm. I think a lot of people are going to talk about the pain that this is going to cause. And I think it's obvious, right? I, I mentioned it before. It's only going to get worse when we start talking about the money here. I also want to talk about solutions and how you can be a part of it. Because this isn't a magical world, right? We all accept that there are finite resources and our ability to, to move them. We talk about real-world problems with our students every day, and we encourage them to use yes-and thinking, right? And when we look at this problem, we can keep kicking the ball down the road because as Superintendent Slaughter's presentation starts, this budget process starts with town committees. I've been to those meetings, as many of you have, and seen them celebrate how their credit ratings are doing, right? When we are prioritizing credit ratings over our classrooms, we're going to have this same conversation over and over and over again. I have a third grader. I don't want to have this conversation nine more times before he graduates. He can't stand to lose this rate of teachers nine more times before he graduates. So when we talk about this moment in time right now, we're talking about the ability of this school committee and appreciate the conversation that was had about what can we do before that vote? Because at the end of the day, y'all are going to be asked to either be complicit in a budget which cuts the same people whose students went to when they were hurt, as we saw in the Title IX investigation. You're going to cut the same people whose students go to when they are hurt, as we have seen time and time again with allegations in this district. And when we start to prioritize our children and say, no, we're not going to accept just 3%, no, it is not fair for us to say that you are the, worth the same amount of investment as the library or the police department, because that's always what we've done. When we start saying that your classroom, your education is worth more than our credit rating in this moment as a town, then we can have an honest conversation with our students about their future. But until that moment, we're prioritizing standard and poor over our poor every single day. And unless we're going to be honest with our students that the people that they rely on may go if we don't have the money to keep them, then I'm sorry, but the classroom that you run to for safety, the Claire Cocos who you go to and say, can I have a coat? Because I can tell you, there's at least two students at my school who wear mine every day. When they don't know if they're going to be able to rely on that, and every year we're going to have the same conversation, that's not a promise. That's an ongoing threat.
Hi. I'm Molly Cooksey. I live in Schutzbury, and I'm a dual-language kindergarten teacher at Fort River Elementary School. And I'm also a member of the executive board for the APA. Try to get through this in my three minutes. So the schedule approving that is really helpful. Thank you for approving that. We have a lot of students that travel to other countries to visit family, especially after COVID, that they didn't get to see for a really long time. I have students that miss out on school in order to make those trips. And extending the winter break is going to make it more feasible for more children to be in school during school hours and not have to lose time on those trips. So that's from my perspective. I, I appreciate that. I'm excited to hear about all of the different ways that people are thinking creatively about funding, the option of tapping into our higher education resources who benefit from having all these schools. I've had multiple student teachers that I support, and I think I'm worth a little bit more than a waiver for some graduate credits personally, and I think the other mentor teachers are too. We have millions, if not billions, of dollars right next door to us. So I look forward to hearing all of the different ways that you're going to go to the town and say, look at all these other solutions that we have. Teachers aren't actually a feasible solution. Paraeducators are not a feasible solution. When we talk about the students that are coming into our district and predicting our enrollment, what you don't know is that we have a ton of kids that come in at the end of the summer. We have kids that are getting given permission to school of choice in. We have kids that are moving here, families that are moving here for our special ed services. So maybe our enrollment dwindles a little bit, but the majority of those students coming into our school system are coming to get services for being multilingualistic, for being, for being students that receive special ed services. And so then when you take away educators, maybe the, the numbers aren't there, but the level of need is not decreasing. It is increasing. And we're also making an assumption, I think, by not saying it out loud, that we're adequately funded right now. We're not. We are scraping it together. We are trying to stay in compliance with all of the 504s and the IAPs and all of the, and IDEA, I mean, et cetera, et cetera, the LOOK Act. We don't want to be in noncompliance. We always want to do what's best for our students. It's painful when we aren't given the resources that we need. And so not even being adequately funded now, and then on top of that proposing cuts, is, to me, it's not an option. It's not something that we can go to the town with. It's not something that can be voted on. It's not realistic. If you continue to take away staff that work with children as children with significant needs come in, then what do we have? Why wouldn't they go to a charter school? Why wouldn't they leave? Why would they even come in the first place? So please don't let this be an option. It's, it's really not a real, a real solution.
I'm Angla Jaleesh. I live in Amherst, but I am reading a comment by Danielle Seltzer, who lives in Turner's Falls. She made this comment, she did send this comment to you all, but it didn't make it to the public comment, so I'm going to read it here. My name is Danielle Seltzer, and I work at, oh, sorry. My name is Danielle Seltzer, and I work at Amherst High School. This is my 13th year working at the ARPS district. In those 13 years, I witnessed several massive budget cuts to either the Amherst schools or the region. This is a completely unsustainable way of doing business, and longer it continues, the more student needs will go unmet. This is our second million-dollar range budget cut at the regional schools in a row. This cut will be absolutely devastating. I was a special education teacher for eight years at the high school. And I want to make you aware of a pattern that I've observed and that many SE educators will confirm if you ask them. As you heard last week when discussing the potential cuts to the intervention classes, when elective classes are cut, students suffer, particularly students who may not learn in the ways that we deem traditional. What this has meant at the high school level is that students feel less successful and less like they belong. This compounds the already rising mental health crisis, mental health issues among teenagers. These students will then likely to be referred to special education to determine the issues by families or educators who mean well and want to help them with whatever resources we have left. The students will likely to be found eligible and receive costly instructional support that does not address the core issue of their struggles. This pattern already occurring at the high school is an ultimately costlier one. A penny cut here is a dollar spent elsewhere. Is it any wonder that the more we cut a variety of educational opportunities for students, thereby limiting the definition of success, the more we end up labeling students as disabled? Adequately funding education should be a top priority for town government. There needs to be a better mechanism to fund our schools at both the local and state level. If you're willing to say no to this disastrous budget, there are educators and staff who will not only stand behind you, but help advocate for the funding our students need. Lots of them who are not here today. We have many, many, many more. And we have said, we will help you. And we keep getting the answer, no, we don't need your help. That is not part of what APA or what educators are there to do. And we can help you. You've seen some of that here already today. Sorry, that was me editorializing, not Danielle. In your discussions around budget, I implore you to keep the discussion focused on the items you can control, namely your obligation to advocate against austerity and business-as-usual-type budgets and take money away from our schools. I urge you to come up with a specific action plan to get that money back. Our students deserve every opportunity to find success and happiness in school. Please use your position to be strong, rigorous advocates for the funding that our schools need. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Ruthie Kilo-Hill. I'm here to read Michelle Prindl's comment because she had to leave. I understand public comment. You're here to hear what we have to say, and I appreciate that, but I would like to think about families who can't attend and how to make that more available for them. I'm a mother of three kids from Amherst, two at Crocker and one at ARMS. My sixth grader at Crocker is autistic. He's very open about his disability and takes pride in overcoming challenges that neurotypical students do not face. He has experienced bullying in fourth, fifth, and sixth grade at Crocker, but the team has been wonderful. His special education co-teachers at each grade level have known and helped him, and he has a clear safety plan. Alternatively, my eighth-grade son is neurotypical, well-liked and old for his grade, and a model student at ARMS. He suffered extreme bullying in the seventh grade. His physical safety was threatened. This all happened out of the view of teachers in hallways, restrooms, and outdoors at recess. He felt unsafe and did not know who to go to or where to turn. When his, when this finally came to light, we sought help and followed, and filed a bullying report, but not until after the damage was done. I'm extremely concerned for the safety of my autistic son at ARMS next year. And now more so due to the prospective staffing cuts. We cannot keep these kids safe without the necessary levels of paras and teachers. We cannot meet their IEP goals or provide accessible education. Do not cut Amherst educators. I'd like to add that we've been concerned about the middle school and high school for the last several years. And if we're concerned about their safety and we're concerned about no longer traumatizing children, we have to keep the special education, the paraeducators there for them. How can we offer them any support if we don't have the teachers and the paraeducators? As a, I'm a school adjustment counselor, and I would echo what Molly has said. Mental health issues have increased, so we need the most, those who have the most direct connection to students to be at our schools. Please look at what has been proposed, whether there are cuts to administration or different ways we get funding in our, from Amherst. Because this has always been a pride of Amherst, is that we fund our schools. Thank you.
My name is Ashley Dunn. I am the drama teacher at Amherst Regional Middle School, and I'm a resident of Sunderland. I've kind of gone back and forth at what I'd like to share, so I'm just going to go over a couple things here. While sitting in this meeting, I took some time to reflect on what the experience is like for a middle schooler, specifically what their experience may have been like in this district for the past few years. I started working in this district in 2019. I was a paraeducator at Wildwood in the Intensive Learning Center. And in my first year, we experienced the COVID-19 pandemic, and we all had to stay home. And so I witnessed a lot of stress with students, specifically, I was working with neurodivergent students with high support needs and just trying to help them understand what the virus was and what it meant to be home and what is two weeks and lengths of time and all these big things that no, none of us in this room ever had to think about in fourth grade, I imagine. I don't want to be 100% about that, but there haven't been any pandemics like this one recently in this country. So, you know, just with that in mind, that was a huge piece of trauma that these kids went through. They had to go to school at home, or they were in school. They wore masks. They couldn't play with their friends. We were in school with them. We were concerned about contracting the virus for our loved ones. I did bus duty with a kid who told me that he was worried he was going to kill his dad because he was going to get COVID. You know, just hearing these things are things that I never heard of or never thought of when I was a fourth grader or a fifth grader or a sixth grader. And then I entered Amherst Regional Middle School last year as a drama teacher. And in my first year, students experienced a huge piece of trauma when there was bullying that went on at Title IX investigation and a lot of noncompliance in terms of supporting students and their needs and LGBTQ discrimination. And that was felt by all of us. We also experienced a lot of staffing shortages, people on leave, and the support, we did our best. And I, I got to say, I work with my role models. I'm just so proud of the teachers that I work with. I wish they were my teachers because we all really stepped up. And people who were more experienced than me really stepped up. And without us, if, if there's less of us in the future, we're, we're doing, we're failing them after they've been through enough. I mean, haven't they been through enough, honestly? I think that we need to just think about that. Like, imagine being a seventh or eighth grader and who has gone through all of that. And then now, there's going to be less something, less special ed, less core classes, less exploratory world language, whatever it is. It doesn't even really matter where the cuts are. You're going to cut things that the kids need. So I just want your support in that. You know, they've done enough. They've had enough. Thank you.
So my name is Amber Cano-Martin. I'm a parent. I have one child at Fort River in the Caminantes program. Shout out, Molly. And thank you, you know, to all the teachers who have spoken and who are here tonight, and many of you have been my children's teachers. You guys are amazing. So I came here tonight, like many did, to speak against the budget cuts that will affect our classrooms, that will affect our teaching personnel, that will affect our children the most directly. And so I'm unequivocally opposed to those cuts. And I think most people are here because they feel the same way. I was also at another meeting, another budget hearing about a week or so ago when we talked about the elementary schools budget. We had over 100 people on Zoom. You guys remember? I think we would have that same turnout here tonight if this, we had a Zoom option because people feel very strongly about this. And parents are parenting, so, you know, it's not easy to come out in person. So those of us who are here, we're lucky that we can, but we want to speak for those who couldn't make it out. And just say, you know, that you as a school committee, many people have already said this tonight, you're not powerless, right? You're our elected officials. We elected you for a reason. We trust you. We want you to represent us. And so what we would like you to say to the town is that what you have offered us for a budget is not acceptable. It's not enough to fund a school district. We were already operating with a budget that was too low for what we need. And so this is a no-go. It's just a no-go, right? So vote no on, vote no on this budget. Tell the town council it's a no-go. And let's look for other sources of funding. Let's look to Amherst College and their endowment. Let's look to UMass. Let's look to our own town budget. So we have this library project that costs $46.1 million. I think we just recently added another $10 million that they're going to be providing. I think we just recently added another $10 million that the town is liable for and is gonna be paying interest on. So that vote was a priority. You could tell it was a priority because I went to that town council meeting and it passed immediately with almost no opposition. That's what it looks like when something is a priority. So if our children's education were a priority, we wouldn't be having this conversation. We would be passing a budget. Thank you. We would be passing a budget that adequately funds our school district. Many people came here for the school district. My family is one of those families. I bought a house here because of the school district. And education quality is going down. The teachers who are here tonight, the pairs who are here tonight are telling you the house is on fire. So what I'm asking you guys is to act like the house is on fire. Act like it. Take action. Tell the town councils it's not acceptable. They're not listening to us. You know, like I said, 100 parents came out to the last hearing. People are paying attention. They're not happy. Our priorities are off, and we're depending on you to represent us. Thank you.
My name's Irene LaRoche. I live in Sunderland. I've been teaching at the middle school since 2003. I don't know if I'm able to get through all these pages, but as you consider the budget and potential cuts for the region, I would like to share the impact of cuts we have already experienced. When I started at the middle school, there were eight teams. We are now down to four, and we have not had half of the enrollment decline. In the last three years, the middle school has lost four core teaching positions. We've lost a lot of valuable positions and a lot of programs over the years, but I'm gonna speak to the core tonight. Core subject areas are math, science, ELA, and social studies. The direct result of the cuts is a 20% increase in class sizes. We have science and social studies classes with 25, 26, 27 students. The impact of this is too great to enumerate, but I'll give you some examples. Core subjects are an important part of the foundation of the middle school. We make up the teams along with a special education teacher. Each team is a home base for the students. These cuts mean that we have less time to build our relationships with our students. Students are less known by us, the people who are supposed to be their trusted adults. This is happening as we're recovering from the impact of COVID and a time when, for a variety of reasons, students need more, not less, connection with their adults. As classes get too big, curriculum and assessment changes. A significant part of our workday for core teachers already occurs outside contracted hours. I'm not supposed to say that, sorry, union folks. But my planning, my grading, my communicating with families, it happens at home after my own children are in bed. We have time to make adjustments to our curriculum. We need that time to make these adjustments. Project-based learning, research, and longer writing assignments all take more time to plan and assess. We cannot do that when we are teaching these large numbers. Core subject areas have veteran teachers. Most of us have been teaching 15 to 20 years. Many of us serve at the school in ways beyond just in our classroom. We serve on committees, we run clubs, we plan advisory lessons for the whole school. We create identity-affirming assemblies and events for the entire student body. We mentor new teachers, we teach workshops and classes for teachers, and we are in leadership roles in a variety of ways in the education field. Some of us have had to step back from those roles, which are improvement for our own community and give status to our school because of the workload that has increased due to these cuts in the last three years. You may not know, but the MCAS has expanded. This year, eighth graders will take a field test for the new civics MCAS. This means our middle school core teachers will be preparing students for MCAS in all four of the core subjects. In addition to the new MCAS, social studies teachers have to guide civic action projects mandated by the state. We embrace that. We've been doing this long before the state requirement. We're actually proud of that. You probably remember the eighth graders who got us to put Indigenous Peoples' Day on the calendar. But these new mandates do come with greater scrutiny from the state, and our core programs need the resources and time that we do not have because we have increased class sizes. We spend a great deal of our time planning... Oh, you're kidding. Thank you. You're not gonna be able to read my scratch.
I'll do my best. Hi, my name's Amy Kalman. I use she/her pronouns. I'm a speech-language pathologist here at the high school, and I've now been asked to add to my 1.0 FTE at the high school by helping out at the middle school an additional part-time position. So I'm continuing on with Irene's words. "We spend a great deal of our time planning for and going to IEP meetings. I go to a lot of those. 30 to 40% of the students in the current seventh grade have IEPs or 504s. 30 to 40%. This takes us away from our classrooms and leaves students with a substitute teacher. We have reduced time to then whole-team, social-emotional, learning opportunities and prevents us from working to support student needs to keep them from needing an ed plan in the first place. Smaller class sizes help keep students out of the IEP pipeline because we can better differentiate and meet their needs. We've lost that time due to the cuts. The very space that we work in is challenged by the cuts to staff and increased class sizes. How we interact in the room changes as it is challenging to do the active learning in the physical space with so many bodies. As Irene moves throughout her classroom, she struggles to find a spot to sit next to a student, to engage with them and the work. This time, sitting side by side is invaluable. She's tried to be creative. She even purchased a stool to move around, but can't always find a space for it. It's not just our existing staff and students that have been impacted. Recruiting and retaining new teachers has become very challenging. Just this summer, a teacher who was offered a position at Arms chose to take an offer from a neighboring district because they were promised smaller class sizes. I wish I had more time to prepare my words. I hope you are beginning to see the picture, but you are about to discuss cuts, future cuts. But we are still suffering from past ones. Those cuts were made with little fanfare, no input from middle school staff, and no evaluation of their impact. Please do not accept that we need to keep cutting away at the experience of our students. Let's work together to find the funds to fund the future. We are a talented and experienced staff, a caring and creative community. I know we can do it together." And just to add, in terms of, I have no idea what I have in terms of time, but I'm deeply saddened that I've moved to a community which I first came to as a college student, excited, enthusiastic to be learning myself. And then I decided to come back and make a home here for my family. I started out very invested in the schools and chose to work here, and I'm not seeing that really be manifested in the type of civic action that we have here, where we have decisions that are being made just on a bottom line. Please work with us. Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name's Keith McFarland. I'm a teacher and coach here at Amherst Regional High School. At one of the last school committee meetings, there were questions about the current high school schedule. There was concern over learning loss during large gaps when students aren't in specific classes such as math, word, language. I can tell you why we have this current schedule. I've been in this district for 18 years, started under a trimester schedule where the same concerns were voiced about learning gaps. A student could have a particular class in trimester one and two, but possibly not again until trimester two of the following year, the same considerable break. We switched to a seven-drop-one semester schedule for several years, and then we have this current schedule. And the reason for the current schedule at first was to reduce the number of passing periods to lessen the interactions coming off COVID. Now it's because it's the most cost-effective model, or rather, it's the cheapest model. I don't think it's a great schedule. It puts kids with the world's shortest attention span at a desk for an hour and 20 minutes. Administrators encourage teachers to take breaks halfway through class, which to me is an indication the classes are just too long. And since trying to get kids back on track after a break is like herding cats, I have concerns about time on learning. Additionally, class content has been reduced in the schedule. What used to be year-long classes are now a semester. What were semester-long classes are now a quarter. We were told that because classes are longer, that the time on learning is roughly the same, but in reality, it is impossible to provide the same amount of content. This is all just to say that district has not fully invested in education for far too long. ARHS used to have child development classes, home economic classes, business and accounting classes, wood and auto shop classes, culinary arts classes, all cut. These cuts can lead to students choicing out of the district, attending charter schools, opting for tech schools, or going to private schools, all additional drains on our district. And until our most recent contract, which took over a year of, at times, hostile negotiations, teachers and staff had a cost of living raises regularly under 2% and even less than 1%. Again, a distinct lack of investment. I do want to thank this current school committee for its level of advocacy. I appreciate your pushback on the guardrails and the hard questions you've been asking, and I hope that you can mitigate the potential cuts to as great a degree as possible. You've inherited a mess, and it's not surprising. Over the last several years, municipalities have received significant resources in emergency ARPA and ESSER funds, and our district has handled them poorly by using those funds to offset recurring budget needs rather than investing in single expenditures like buildings, materials, or infrastructure. We are not seeing surrounding districts in a similar difficult situation because they did not use that temporary revenue on recurring expenses. Finally, I believe the four town governments need a long-term vision for what they expect of the schools and how to fund them. I think they need a vision of what they expect five to eight years from now, when our elementary school students will be in this high school. Will it be a gutted shell of what it once was? Or will the towns invest in making excellent schools that the citizens and taxpayers of this particular region expect? Because when I look back five to eight years to now, I feel like we're staggering towards mediocrity.
I have nothing planned to say, so my name is Nicolette Blount. I'm a mom, and my kids go here to high school. And we moved here because of the school system. My husband's an oral maxillofacial surgeon, and our taxes are crazy. But we thought, well, we have good school system. My daughter's a senior here. She got an interview at Dartmouth. They have not rejected her yet, so she's still in the running. She has gotten into a lot of really good schools. She hasn't chosen yet, but it's because of the education here. And it's because that this town, at least from what we have seen in the past, has made education a priority. I don't know if that's the case now, sadly. I can tell you, I'm from Southern California, and I can tell you exactly what happens when people cut schools. I was a drug-addicted teen, so I can tell you exactly. My parents were both teachers in the school system. My brother was a California teacher, as is his wife. And they have cut so many things in California schools, and it's bad. And the suicide rates are bad. We all know that for kids in general. And when you cut schools, especially the arts, because that's like one of the first things people cut, is the arts, physical education, all these extra things, and those are the things that are so important for these kids. Just to let you know about the theater and music department here and to advocate for them, I went on the field trip with them recently, and I could not believe how organized, how amazing everyone was who was part of that. Fruth and Beck and all the orchestra teachers. It was amazing, and to see how many kids went and how much social interaction there was. And these kids could be doing so many other things that are not good for them, and yet they choose to do that. And I'm a Broadway producer, and just to let you guys know that people outside of this area have noticed that this school has a good music and theater program. And I have some friends who write musical theater for Broadway. And because they know of the music and the theater program here, they have shows that are written for teenagers that they want Beck to do here at the school, Beck and Fruth. And they want them to help them develop it because they're looking for high schools that have these good programs and have talented kids to do these things. So people outside of this little bubble are noticing this school and their music program and their theater program. And so these things are so important. I mean, for those who don't know, music is the only thing that crosses over both hemispheres of the brain at the same time. It's very important. Theater is very important for public speaking. It's very important for problem-solving and working together and learning teamwork. And it's not just all about, oh, it's some fun theater show. It's more than that, and music is more than that. Music is scientific and mathematical. And so I'm here to advocate for the arts. I'm also here to just say, like, you guys have done a great job so far in this school district, and please don't let it turn into Southern California schools because they're bad. Thanks.
Hi, my name's Allegra Clark. I'm an Amherst resident. I have a Wildwood first grader, and I am a graduate of Amherst High School in 2003 when it was number two in the state. And I can attest to all the cuts that have happened over the years because I remember seeing Ms. Courtney every day. Even though I didn't have her class, she was the home ec teacher. She always had muffins. I always took them. And I saw her at her job post-retirement at Trader Joe's, and she talked about how devastating the cuts had been after she left, after she retired and they didn't fill her position. And that was one resource that kids had that might not have done well traditionally in classroom learning. That is gone, and that's a devastating blow to our students. I worry about all the administrators and nobody left to administer if we're cutting 10% of our teachers this year, if that's the plan. And this isn't the first time that I've come in front of the school committee asking not to make cuts to teachers. I feel invested in the regional schools, even though I don't have a student that I parent there yet because I know what a good education I was able to get in these halls. And I'm getting emotional because it's really sad. We moved back here because of the schools. We left Boston. We paid $200 a year in property taxes there. We pay more than five figures here in Amherst because we're supposed to have great resources. And what are they going towards? I don't really know at this point because the roads suck. Everything's falling apart, and our teachers aren't paid, and we're cutting more and more staff every year. So again, it's really devastating to hear about and trying to think positively and think about some solutions. I'm wondering if the town ARPA funds that were earmarked for the middle school move are still real dollars that are out there that could help support the schools in some other way? Because I believe it was like $800,000 that were earmarked for that move. I know those funds have to be spent before 2026, and that was supposed to be on the town council agenda this week, but the meeting got postponed. This is maybe a controversial proposal, but I believe that Hadley last year had actually limited charter enrollments for their students. So they said they weren't gonna pay for students to go to charter schools anywhere. I'm not sure how that worked, but that was something that I'd read about. And I wonder if that is a way to stop some of the hemorrhaging from the district because I think we need to find revenue sources, but we also need to find areas to make up losses. And I had another idea, but I forget what it was. Perfect.
Vince O'Connor from Amherst. So I assume everyone in the school committee knows that notwithstanding anything the manager may recommend, that the city council has the authority to vote the school budget as you voted, notwithstanding the manager's recommendations, and if necessary to, may have a balanced budget to reduce the recommendations of the manager for municipal services. Does the city council have that right? So by the time you vote this budget, if the schedule is, as said, is mid-March, you will have three and a half months to do two things. And you have all these folks behind us and many, many more who would have been here if they could be to do two things. One, to convince Amherst College that they can't move their plant to South Carolina. And they need to contribute to the community in which they were built by this town and where they've created a budgetary deficit for the last 40 years because of taking the old fraternities off the rolls. By the time this community got finished with Amherst College, they would be happy to give you $2 million a year for each school district. The second thing is that in three and a half months, by the time the city council in Amherst votes for the budget, the same community of people, I think, I guarantee... um, the same community of people, I think, I guarantee you, will convince the city council that it is in the town's interest, all four towns and the city's interest to vote the budget, the school budget as proposed by the school committee. And let the manager deal with the fallout from what they have to do to have a real school budget. You give me three and a half months, you give these folks and this community three and a half months of a real budget. And we will do those things absolutely.
Uh, hi. My name is Hayden Riley Hogan. Um, I live in Schutzbury. Um, and I'm a senior at the high school and a member of Sunrise Amherst. If you want to pick up one of our pins, there was Julian back there. Um, I just kind of want to come up here. Um, I wasn't planning on speaking, but I wanted to tell you guys a little bit about um, my day today because I feel like it's really relevant and I feel like I kind of have a duty to um, speak about the teachers that I'm benefiting so much from and about the things that I see going on here that are being really undervalued. Um, so this morning I uh got up early and I was headed to a college class. Um, and as I was driving, I saw a school bus. It was like seven in the morning around there. Um, and I saw a school bus that was completely empty, just kind of like driving around. And they were like letting people pass and everything because there was nobody on the bus and nobody getting on or anything. Um, and it just kind of gave me pause because I can't understand why we're facing these kind of cuts to teachers and to paraprofessionals. And to these services that I see the students around me and myself benefiting from so much every day. Um, while things like that, while buses that are completely empty are running outside of school hours and not benefiting at anyone at all. Um, and then later in the day, I was about to eat lunch. Um, and I had a conversation with one of the students who was receiving um special ed services. Uh, and they told me that they were really sad because they can never have lunch with their paraprofessional. Um, and I asked why and they said it's because their para can't afford it. Um, and they said that they had offered to buy their para lunch from the school. Um, but the para had obviously refused. Um, and that also kind of struck me because I'm seeing this really stark contrast between these inefficiencies that are obviously costing a lot of money. And like Julian said, we were in the same environmental science class this year. And we talked a lot about the um inefficiencies in the carbon emissions of the school and why we have all of this stuff that clearly isn't being used and isn't necessary, um, and how we can cut back on that. And then I see things like the school buses in tandem with these just really heart-wrenching experiences of students receiving these really important services. And we're almost acting like the services have the space to be cut down on. Like, it's not like we have these services and they're just like plentiful and nobody's actually using them and they're just like these unused resources. Um, and yeah, I just thought that it's a really important point to think about. Um, the inefficiencies that we do have and the places we can cut back and the places where we don't have any space for these cuts. And I think that's teachers and that's paraprofessionals and that's people who actually interact with students like me every single day.
Hi, my name is Ingrid Hopkins. I'm a parent here and I live in Amherst and I teach at the middle school. I teach English language learners. And um, so I just, as the budget came to us and I was thinking about how recently we had um five new arrivals in the, since December, maybe, maybe six actually since December. And I sit with guidance counselors to try to see where we can fit the student in who's new here and um and I just remembered the, in repeating meetings, the guidance counselor saying, nope, that's full. Nope, that one's, we're over capacity. You can't enter your child into this art class. You're gonna have to take health or you're gonna have to take something that's another literary or literacy-heavy class. And I'm going, no, 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 I need gym or hip hop. I want one of the classes. One of the things that will make them feel like, you know, like they can do this without English. And um, and they were just, they were just at capacity and the guidance counselor couldn't put them in. I thought, how can we be thinking of reducing or increasing class size, reducing these elector- or exploratories, that's what we have at the middle school. I mean, we're just already full, full. There's not, I don't see the fat to cut. I just don't see it. I don't see that. And I've pushed in sometimes to, to support the students in the core classes. Whereas my colleagues, um, Dr. LaRoche was saying, yeah, it's full on. There's no extra space. I don't see how you, I don't see how you can do that, how you can do it. I feel like it's, we're still recovering from the recent cuts, yeah, from the recent, you know, pushing together. And we're good at that. We're, we're creative. We're, we're making it work, but I mean, there is a limit before it starts really harming students. So, yeah, it's hard, hard to see that. I think that's all I want to say to you all. Thank you.
Hello, um, I just ran over from, my name is Oliver Waldman. I'm an Amherst resident. I'm a ARHS class of eighty-seven. Um, I came back to Amherst um with kids and I have one child who just completed the high school and one who's in high school. Um, I spent this year volunteering at the school with the performing arts program and the president and other friends of performing arts. Uh, we do bake sales and we raise money. Um, but I, that's a small amount of money and it's not budget-sized. It's just to help and see what we can do with what we have and make things work in the classrooms that already exist for the programs that are already in existence. And as someone mentioned, uh, we have great programs. I really, they're spectacular. My older son did go on the, the band trip to Ohio and the Amherst policy was everyone goes. And we raised money for scholarships so that everyone went, wanted to go. And it was uh well-run. It was affordable and I actually accidentally went because someone got sick and so I went as a chaperone. And it was amazing. It was an incredible life-changing experience. And I'm not saying that we're selling that. We're not selling Disneyland. But what the school already has um is great. It's a great system. And, and you think, well, okay, so that there's some room there, right? It's great. Well, maybe we could just, we could take it down a notch and, you know, cover some funds. And I understand that there's an actual deficit. I'm not actually prepared, like, in a budgetary way. I actually only found about, uh, found out about the elementary school proposal like last week. I mean, just because I'm not tied into this. I didn't even know it was coming. And then tonight I just found out, uh, about this meeting. So here I am. I was working the show, the gala, tonight, so I could, I could be here. Um, what I had been thinking about for the, I'm gonna just get to my point. I had thought about this last year that if you cut an elementary school art teacher, a music teacher, what happens? Um, kids get their hands on instruments in fourth, fifth, and sixth grade. And if they don't, if there's not enough teachers to give them instruments or to, to promote that, they don't pick them up again in seventh and eighth grade. So the moment you have attrition at fourth and fifth grade, that number of music students never increases. You get some theater and you get some corral, but there's a, there's a certain progression that kids don't start violin in seventh grade. So it's, it's a program. And so when you make cuts, and I'm just talking about the arts. I just don't have any other depth here. If you make cuts to an art program, it's not random. It's not, it, it could be based on union seniority. It could be based on budget. It could be based on this school or that school. But currently the Amherst system is a unified art system, even though it's not designed to be that way. It is, and they all are. And they work from fourth grade on to twelfth grade. And there's developmental areas where some students need to do drum classes because they're great. So I would hope that you would respect the system as you look at it. Thank you.
Good evening. Um, I know many of you. My name is Remy Fernandez O'Brien. Uh, my pronouns are they/them. I am the dance teacher at the high school and the middle school. Um, and I have pretty serious ADHD. Um, and I went to high school here. I graduated in two thousand and eight. And the s- school really wasn't always a place that worked for me. It wasn't a place where I found what, uh, I just didn't necessarily see the value in it. I didn't see the, um, and then I met Tracy Vernon and her dance program um here at the high school. And over the course of four years, that was the one factor that transformed me into somebody who was passionate about and invested in my own education. Um, and I, I had a lot of friends who were only at school in the building because they came for bomba or they came for dance class. And that got them in the building for other things, but it also got them to start having conversations about like, how can education benefit me? For students who had never understood before why education would benefit for them, who never felt before like school was for them. Um, and I was one of those people and yeah, again, after the transformative experience of the arts program here at the high school, I graduated from Brown. I got a master's degree in education from Harvard. And I chose to come back here to invest in this community to teach. Um, and that is really because of this, like, lifelong passion that was built here. And I, I can, I can speak for the dance program, but I know my colleagues in the arts department are doing the same thing. Is the students who are immigrants, the students who are queer and still building their identity, the students who uh come from a different background and don't feel like this school is built for them or designed for them. Those are the students who often end up in our arts programs and who often end up finding a home and a community there. Um, and I, I worry that if we lose that, then we are saying as a community that those kids aren't important to us. That, that it's not important to us to have those, to give those students a reason to be in the building and to invest in education. Um, and I worry that, this is a, this is a twenty-year cycle that I'm, that I'm on right now. Tracy Vernon, my mentor, I'm teaching dance now. If I'm, if I'm not here next year, there probably will be another me here in twenty years with the same investment in our community with the same um care for our students. Thank you. Any other public comments?
Oh, can I speak up here?
Yeah.
Okay, um. Yeah, so hello, my name is Miguel Pinero. Um, I'm a senior here at the high school. Um, and I just wanted to give another student perspective and speak to um what I've noticed uh in, in our teachers here, my experience. Um, so I moved here from Jefferson City, Missouri um in seventh grade. Um, and one of the things I heard the most about coming to Massachusetts, in particular Amherst, was, you know, obviously the quality of education. Um, and arriving here in seventh grade, I wasn't disappointed. Um, particular, particularly in, in the pandemic. Um, what I saw was teachers moving their entire curriculum to distance. Um, with the block schedule, I saw, I saw teachers um shifting an entire year-long curriculum into a semester. Um, and every time I open up one of Mr. Gould or Mr. Fricka's colored Google Docs, I think about um the effort that they put into that, um, into making sure that we receive uh the quality education that Amherst is known for. Um, and so as, even as we came back into person, um, as a member of various student organizations here, um, I've seen that commitment to students um extend outside of the classroom. Um, for example, I'm a part of the French club. Um, and last month we hosted our seventh annual uh French night where we brought over three hundred people in the cafeteria to demonstrate, uh, to celebrate Francophone diversity. Um, it took months of planning and at the head of all was my French teacher of four years and advisor to the French club, Madame Cisse. Um, in the weeks leading up to it, I saw her do everything from print tickets to going to Big Y and other local businesses to ask for donations. Um, and when it was all, when it was all said and done, she told me she stayed at the, at the high school until eleven PM. And what she did was she was crying out of, out of joy, um, out of passion for how well the event went. Um, and if this is, if this doesn't reflect the commitments our teachers make to our students, I don't know what does. Um, our, our teachers have had stuff thrown at them um over and over again and they've kept on going in the name of her students. Um, and as a student, I want to remind everyone that they're the key for success and I wanted to thank them for everything they do for us. Um, that's all I have to say.
I'm gonna attempt to play the voicemail. I have to apologize. This is my first night of a chairing a meeting, so I'm not quite sure totally what I'm doing. And my computer doesn't want to play the voicemails, so we're gonna try Doug's.
Doug, can you leave the Zoom meeting or?
I could try.
It's, it's coming up now.
February twenty-seventh, school committee meeting. You know, high school, and I'm calling. This is a public comment for the February twenty-seventh school committee meeting. My name is Michael Cardozo and I'm a teacher at Amherst Regional High School. And I'm calling to recommend and ask that the school committee seek additional funding from the town to avoid the cuts that are being proposed. The cuts, as they are proposed now, um stand to significantly impact all students in our district. As the class sizes will increase, the programs being offered will be reduced. And the educational opportunities will be uh impacted for all of our students. It is morally right to offer the students the best education that our town is capable of offering. It is economically wise to invest in our schools and make sure that the town maintains the reputation we have for well-funded and high-functioning schools. With all those, with that reputation and everything that comes with it of keeping this town attractive to families, will come a payoff in economically with revenue and all the other economic boosts that we have from being an attractive town, partly because of how strong our schools have been over the years. There is evidence um based on other projects the town has undertaken that there are ways to find this money and I'm uh asking for the school committee to seek ways to find that funding um the same way we have for other projects in the town. And to look through all the high revenue areas. and to look through all the high-revenue areas and entities in the town that seem to demonstrate a large mass of wealth. There are ways to find this money, and I'm asking the school committee to please do so. Thank you.
I believe that wraps up our public comment.
So I want to say something, just in case we don't have an additional meeting before we have to vote on March 12th. You can time me if you want. So Doug, if we have this deadline, if we have to, if we're compelled or required to vote on a budget by March 17th or at our March 12th meeting, then we need a budget we can support. Or I can't speak for everyone, but I need a budget I can support, and I can't support this budget. So, okay, first, if the middle school and high school leadership model is gonna change next year, which I assume it is since we're hiring a middle school principal, if there's gonna be one principal per building and fewer assistant principals, then I would think we would see that reflected in the budget. But first, so when I look at the line item budget, there's no percent changes here, and I need percent changes so I can compare things. But if I look at total regular instruction, that's going up five percent versus last year. When I look at school administration for the high school, that bucket is going up thirty-three percent. I'm seeing a dean of students, that's zero for fiscal twenty-four, and it's proposed at a hundred and eighty-two thousand for fiscal twenty-five. That sounds like two positions to me, or I would think. And the assistant principal line is actually higher next year than in the current year. So what's happening there? I'm not asking you to answer now, but these are areas that I... I'm not asking you to explain or rationalize why these have to be. I'm saying these are places where if I'm gonna approve a budget, I need to see those things being reduced rather than actual teachers. I'm also seeing a twenty-one percent increase in total school administration, again, while regular instruction's only increasing by five percent. And then in human resources and diversity support staff, the amount is doubled from a hundred and thirty-three thousand to two hundred and sixty thousand from last year to this year. And overall, central administration is up nineteen percent, while regulations up five percent. So like, we have this deadline, right? We have to approve this budget, we gotta get this to the towns, but like, I can't, and we have two weeks to do that, I can't approve it the way it is. Thank you.
So a couple of things I'll share regarding some of the structuring of what you're seeing. So first of all, the fact that fiscal twenty-four for the dean's position was zero was a mistake in last year's budget. It was not carried forward. It should have been one position, and it has gone to two. So that's just an error from the fiscal forty-four budget. We didn't budget for that position, which is why it is that way. I think as far as the model that we used in putting forward the level services administrative model that we used is principal at the high school, a full-year assistant and a school year assistant, both of which are actually working on reduced, less than 1.0 schedules for those two positions. Partly because the school year position, the staff person, Sam K, wants to continue to teach one class per year, and so that reduces her FTE. And for Ms. Grumacki, she's a full-year person, but she's reduced her schedule as well for personal reasons. And so those are both holding steady at the position. So part of what you're seeing in regard to some of that is regard to, there's two pieces of increase there. One is steps and colas for those two, which would be clearly in the APAA contract. Additionally, the column for fiscal twenty-four had projections for negotiated contracts that are sitting in the contingency funds at the bottom of the budget. So the percentage increase from one year to the next on some of those is higher than would normally be the case because we didn't distribute those costs into the line items in the budget. But I think again, the broader question around some of those changes are ones that when we take things like adds and cuts of twelve thousand dollars, a lot of that's gonna hit in an HR department because of where staff were. Whether that's exactly where all of it goes is gonna be, you know, it's gonna be parsed across multiple lines in that regard, so it's a little hard to tease out from some of those things. And I think that, you know... There are, yeah, so it's a complex year because we've got a very odd current arrangement that was not in of staff. So if you think about who's in interim roles the current year, and you think about what we budgeted for twenty-four and then what we're budgeting for twenty-five, those are built on essentially three different models of staffing. So that makes it hard to kind of compare and contrast around some of that. But, that being said, I mean, I think that's, you know, I appreciate the point and the complications of looking at it and trying to make sense of some of it, for sure. It's not straightforward. I absolutely guarantee you that that's the case, it's not. And it is part of the... Part of why with regard to like the section where I have central office administration reductions, some of that's gonna get distributed across lines. It won't be a single line, so it will have an impact on those. And some of those projections in what you're seeing in the line-by-line at this point were anticipatory of preserving positions, anticipated costs for some of those positions, et cetera. So it is part of why we're reducing it like we're reducing it because it was just, it was an overly large increase in some of those areas as well. But to your point though, just about sort of a budget you can support. I mean, that's the struggle we're in, I mean, we're up against the clock, and we have a lot of complicated things to interact with and think through and figure out. So, you know, obviously, specific feedback, definitely want to have that. I think, you know, I would suggest to both you and Sarah Bass as the chair to schedule another meeting in order to have the opportunity to look at, you know, alternate arrangements of this. I mean, I think there's some other things that are coming and potentially evolving as we speak that are there. You know, I was hopeful that we could actually not have this until the twenty-sixth, but I was reading the regional agreement closely for another purpose and noted the forty-day, and then I counted from, you know, if Lever was having a town meeting at the end of April, then we'd have more time, but we don't. And so that's a constraint we're operating in, and it's really tricky in this cycle of meetings and whatnot. But, you know, again, we can have other meetings, and I think that may be necessary.
Sarah Marshall?
So I have some, just some process questions because in response to some of the comments I've heard. Can you explain what happens? If you know what would happen under a couple of scenarios? What if we did not pass a budget on the nineteenth? What if we didn't meet the forty days? What happens? What if we sent a level services budget, meaning one without these reductions, to the four towns? What might happen? And if they do different things, then what? I mean, I like, because I don't wanna, I don't wanna create a worse problem than we already have.
Point of order? Sorry. Point of order?
Yes.
Budget hearing, budget discussion, I feel like we're really kind of... Where are we in this process? Because I know we need to have the hearing part be as long as half of the total meeting time.
No, no, just that we can't talk about the budget for longer than they have talked about.
So I feel it's essential for us as a committee to have an agenda item where we do have a budget discussion, and I just don't know where we are right now in that. I could use some input.
I'm kind of confused.
Yeah, I think that goes to having another meeting.
No, no.
I can provide a couple of things. So the sort of equal time provision is an artifact of the Amherst charter, not the regional school. So we're not as compelled in that regard.
Oh, excellent.
Number two, I think, you know, even in the hearing, I mean, we've given opportunity for a community to speak, so I think that at this point, it's still within the purview of talking about the budget, you know, to understand the sort of mechanics of how it works. So I think that was largely her question. So I think I would say we're still safe in that regard.
Thank you.
I'll try to give a clear answer and hopefully concise. So, a couple of things. So there's really three parts to having a budget approved. There is the approval of the capital assessments, there's the approval of the operating budget itself, and there's the approval of the assessment method. Because we do not use the statutory method, we are compelled to have an actual vote by each of the towns on the assessment method. And in that process, with the operating budget, and this is true for the capital budget as well, if three of the four, two-thirds is the actual state number, but three of the four vote for it, those pass. However, any one town rejecting the assessment method, and the budget fails. So we don't have a budget. And if that happens, if we don't have a budget, then we get into a circumstance where we have to, you know, connect with the state and essentially sort of re-huddle together the four communities and essentially schedule other town meetings and town council meetings to come to agreement about that. And the state will issue what's called a one-twelfth budget. They'll use the statutory method, which will be significantly different than what our assessment method is. I mean, not too crazy, but it's much different. They have each of the towns, we basically build them on a month-to-month basis, and you have about six months to get it sorted out. So that's the kind of mechanics of what happens is if we don't have items on the warrants of the town meetings. And then, obviously, the other thing I would just say, just regarding what's on a town's warrant, you know, the motion that's made at town meeting can be different than what's written on the warrant. However, there are limitations on what you can do there. In other words, and that's up to the moderator to make a decision about whether it's in the scope or not in the scope of the article. So that's where it gets really uncomfortable. If what we, if what we might pass on the twelfth and what we want them to actually pass when they come to town meeting at the end of April, May, et cetera, is very different, and the moderator feels like it doesn't fit within the scope, then we end up in a similar situation where if they can't take action on the budget, that's essentially like not voting the budget, and we get into whole complications of things. And that sort of thing, so it gets really messy really quickly, is the short answer. So I hope that's a little helpful about how those mechanics work.
Yes, thank you. Can I, one follow-up? I believe that maybe it's going on two years ago that... And I don't remember if it was the region or the elementary school, so, sorry. That the school committee, whichever it was, sent a budget for more than the town said we're gonna give you. And they said, well, we're sending it anyway. And I think it was voted down. All right, so I just want to put that out there.
Yeah, the Amherst school committee's done it both of the last two years.
Last, okay. Okay, thank you.
Bridgette?
We talked previously about you giving us what the level services would look like in that budget? Like if you move the guidelines to show what the level services were like or whatever? And I didn't see it at the four towns or tonight. And I'm just really curious, like, what would that impact look like on the different towns?
Oh, if...
If we kept level services.
Let me see if I can do that really quickly. Go ahead, Tom.
I think it's really important that we have this meeting where we can dive into the details of the budget. I'm sorry that it's Lever that's pushing the calendar, but I think the scale of production was foreseeable for quite some time. And so, you know, it's just now that we're talking about the specifics, what the impacts are. And I think we should have a separate meeting on this. I also want to point out that we're way past the two-and-a-half-hour mark, but I see that the next agenda item has a deadline attached to it.
It does.
So I'm gonna withhold calling a point of order for five minutes to get through that point.
So we should move on.
Can I ask a question? Can the vice chair, chair in the meeting, call for a meeting, a special meeting? To try to schedule one, Barbara here?
Oh.
I mean, I'm not scheduling a meeting right now, but could we, as a group, with me as the vice chair, schedule a meeting for next week?
Sure.
Sarah Bass can do that.
But she's not...
But she's not here.
And she won't be here?
As long as it's within the timeframe of the...
Forty-eight hours?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think so, but correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, you have, act in her place?
You're the chair, yeah.
I don't really think she'd be opposed to it, given the conversation we've had tonight. So, and I'm not gonna oppose it, I'm gonna actually encourage it, so that's fine. I mean, it's... So what I've got on screen here, and ignore the stuff to the right because it's got some guardrail stuff in it, but I think this is what you're asking for, Bridgette. So basically, if we were to take the budget... Get my mouse to work here. So we're take the budget as we determine level services. And I would suggest there are some things that would come out regardless. I mean, there are some of those costs, you know, if you think about the sort of top of that, you know, adjustments, reductions, et cetera, you know, there's three hundred thousand dollars or so that are kind of coming off. But just to get a sense of this, if we say zero, you know, adjustments, cuts, you know, reductions and whatnot, keeping the other things constant, the chapter seventy, the estimates of funding, et cetera, et cetera, that's what the assessments look like, and the percentage increases they are.
Can you bring a more refined version, like with the things you would recommend taking out that don't take ten teachers out? Because I honestly just want to say, like, when I hear about the middle school team, when I always like to go back to the fact that my son had an amazing middle school experience, and many people his year did, but there were, it sounds like eight teams that year, and now we're down to four, and then losing four teachers, that's probably almost another team or something like that. So I'm wondering how much of the middle school problems we have are just like not enough teachers to have enough supervision. So I'd just like to see what this would look like. And then I think if that's not doable, we really have to think about other places for revenue or other places for cuts. And I'm with Jen, I wouldn't vote for this the way it is.
Herv?
Yeah, I would have great trouble voting for this budget as presented until we have a lot more time to discuss this within the school committee. And there are some questions that I have that I would like to have answered, but I would like to have those answered during a special school committee. Right now, this budget is not acceptable to me as is. And it is, this is not to criticize Doug anyway. I know Doug has done an outstanding job in presenting this, but there are just some questions that we need to be able to ask you, Doug, and the school committee, and these discuss in terms of this particular budget. This budget has an impact that goes well beyond just this upcoming fiscal year. And we need to think very carefully about it. Last thing I want to say is that clearly, the financial models and assumptions thereof that we have been going on in terms of our educational model need to be revised and revisited.
Yeah, and I mean, I think that, you know, I will, I'll say the fault. I expected and appreciate the conversation about this because that's why we do this. I mean, that's part of why we have a hearing is to hear this input and feedback from everybody, school committee and others, so that's important feedback, you know, and critical to the process, so that's appreciated. Bridgette, just as, back to the sort of thing. So a quick ballpark of things we could, I think, regardless. And this is mostly the stuff that's, the adjustments at the top, which have to do with, you know, expenses we're not gonna incur, like health insurance and some of that sort of stuff, some other shifts to other funds. You know, and this isn't terribly refined, so that, but this gets you in the neighborhood, you know, if we take out five hundred and forty-one thousand five hundred, and then what those assessments start to look like, the increases are, you know, on the order of eight and a half, seven point six, you know, thirteen, seventeen percent. Those are huge, huge numbers for folks. You know... I mean, just to give you an example, with a community like Palom, I think their year-over-year increase in totality for, you know, with the prop two and a half, I think is on the order of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
For their entire municipal?
For their entire budget. That would be their elementary school, fireplace, the whole kit and caboodle. That's, I mean, that just sort of tells you the scale of how small Palom is. And it's something of that order for Lever and Shute's, they're much smaller. I mean, the totality of the, like, the Palom budget's like five or five and a half million dollars. like, the Palom budget's like five or five and a half million dollars. It's really, it's really not a huge, huge, and, and, you know, there's a million from, for the regional schools, there's a couple million for their elementary school, and then everything else is, is another couple million. So, you know, that's the kind of scale for all of the smaller towns in that regard. And this is, I mean, this is a very broad, brush stroke as far as, you know, that guess of 500 to 1,000, I mean, we could get more refined, but I think it's, the, the reality is, is that, that, you know, those kind of percentage increases are not ones that any of the communities have.
Yep.
I guess I'll just stop with that period at the end of that sentence, so anyway.
So I think we can move on, and we will schedule a meeting shortly. So the next item is a new item that we added, it's the statement of interest for the middle school roof.
Yeah.
I believe Doug's going to speak on that.
So I will, let me share the document here real quick. So, there's a, there's a fairly lengthy motion that's necessary for this. So, we have been applying every year possible to MSBA for funding for the roof at the middle school. We plan to do that again this year, the deadline to send it in is March 1st, which is Friday, and it, and I did not realize we needed an active vote from you, and neither did Mr. Roy Clark, and so we were, you know, long story short, the, the action by you all to submit a statement of interest requires your authorization to do that, and so that required form of vote to submit a statement of interest is essentially saying to the state that we do want to do this project, we do want your money if you want to give it to us, et cetera, et cetera. So, it's, it's come up tonight, just by virtue, and I'm glad we were able to get it into your agenda for the evening, so that this can be, can be voted, because if not, we have to wait a year.
Good thing it is, it's a leap year.
Yeah.
Tillman.
Being of German descent and loving long sentences, I would like to move that having convened in an open meeting on 27th February 2024, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the Amherst Palom Regional School Committee, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent, or votes to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts Building Authority a statement of interest formed dated February 29th, 2024, for the Amherst Regional, Amherst Palom Regional Middle School located at 170 Chestnut Street, Amherst, Massachusetts, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in future placement of the roof, which has been failing at a higher rate in recent years, and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the Amherst Palom School District to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Second.
Any discussion? Sarah Marshall.
I'm delighted to vote for it, but I, I'm a little surprised, because I thought, excuse me, I thought, like, there was, like, our roof wasn't, we didn't need enough money to qualify, or, like you said in the past, we've been turned down because, did they just run out of money? Or it was, I thought it was for bigger projects than our project, so.
It's more the, that the number of projects that they had submitted to them was for more than the money they had available to grant, and so they took the oldest roofs first, so they kept moving the sort of age of the roof further out, you know, they give you a recommendation, oh, it's 25 years, and then we'd be at 25 years, and they're like, oh, it's 26 years.
That's what I was thinking.
And so they sort of kept moving the goalposts, as it were, so that's what we've run up against, is that we, like a lot of communities, have buildings that, you know, date from 1970 or older, and so we're in, in the mix with a number of other communities that are in similar circumstance, and, you know, at some point, they get caught up on those, and hopefully, you know, we'll be at the right age in the right place, because we definitely need to get our roof repaired.
But could that happen in this grant round? Like, if they get too many grants, they move the goalposts again?
We could be denied again, you know, there's, there's no cost to this, other than the time to fill out the form. Fortunately, you know, we've done this a few times, so it's, it's a bit of a leather, rinse, repeat situation, not a, not a from, from scratch, so it's a little easier to do these, given that we've submitted them for multiple years.
Any other discussion?
Yeah.
Bridgette.
So Doug, when you submit this, is there a plan for the roof that you submit with it, or is it just this language here? Like, is there more material? And I ask particularly, because you know how I really don't like that budget line, that shows how much we're spending on electric and, and heat for the, for the regional schools, and so I'm wondering, if there's an opportunity to add solar to the roof while we put it on? I know those would usually be things done in conjunction, so I'm just thinking about that.
Yeah, I know we've discussed it, I don't know, there, there is a fairly extensive, you know, sort of application where you sort of lay out the struggles with roof, and where are the issues, and, and I don't recall whether or not we have formally added solar to that project, I just don't recall right now. I know, Sir Roy Clark and myself have discussed that, because it does change sort of what you do and how you do the project, but I can't recall if we've added it to the, to the language or not. And I think it's also, that part of it would not be funded by MSBA, so they may not make, that may not make a difference in the actual application for their support.
That's all, I just wouldn't want us to preclude it, because if we're replacing the roof.
Right.
There might be a good move.
Any other discussion? Can we move to a vote? Sarah Marshall?
Aye.
Deb Leonard?
Yes.
Tillman?
Aye.
Bridgette?
Aye.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Herv?
Aye.
Anna?
Aye.
William? Aye. So it passes unanimously.
Point of order.
When did Anna show up?
Two and a half hours have well passed.
I'm moving adjourned.
Any discussion?
Is there anything pressing on the superintendent's update?
Thank you for providing a document, so we can read the update, yeah.
Any other discussion?
Just for, Tillman. Clarification, next week's committee meeting that we're planning will be on Wednesday, because of the.
Yeah, we haven't, so, we can do that real quickly right now in the discussion, so, I know the Palom meeting is early.
On March 5th?
Okay, we always meet at like 5:30.
Well, how long do they have? You have a budget.
Well, we're, yeah, you're voting the budget, so, but you're also getting a presentation on the irated curriculum, which is a little longer than sometimes, so that may be a factor. And I think the, the other thing for the, as far as another meeting for the region, I would suggest, probably Wednesday or Thursday would be the better dates for that.
That wouldn't give you much time, though.
Right, well, therein lies the.
Right, would Monday not, would Monday not, earlier in the week not?
No, Leverett School Committee is meeting, I mean, maybe you don't want to meet, but Leverett School Committee meeting is Monday.
Oh, no, we won't.
So it would either be the 6th or the 7th, that Wednesday or Thursday.
Right.
William, do we have policy meeting on the 6th? I have a question mark on my.
We do, yes, but we can't always push it, I mean.
And I would suggest it be a single topic meeting. I mean, there'd be plenty to talk about, I'm not saying that it will be short, but it, but it won't have other things.
I would, I would like to get it scheduled, just, I know the community has a hard time sitting down knowing when our meetings are, so could we schedule it on Wednesday the 6th?
Yes.
Yep. Sure.
At same time, 6:30?
Do we know if the room's available?
Oh, that was our problem.
You'll figure it out. You'll figure it out.
Well, it might not be here, it might be virtual, it might be, you know.
You'll figure it out.
Yes, we will figure it out.
I know, second Jennifer's motion.
Any other discussion on the motion on the floor? Okay, roll call vote, Sarah Marshall?
Aye.
Deb?
Yep, yes.
Tillman?
Aye.
Bridgette?
Aye.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Anna?
Aye.
Herv?
Aye.
William? Aye.
So we are adjourned.